Good evening, everyone. How you doing tonight? All right. Good to have you here. Let's call the meeting of the Santee City Council to order. It's February 28th, 2024, at 6:30 PM. And let the record show that all council members are present. Tonight, we're going to do a couple of presentations. However, before we get to that, we're going to take care of some important business. First is the invocation for the night. And let me tell you a little bit about the person that's going to be here for that tonight. He is Marshall Masser, who is the lead minister at Lakeside Christian Church and has been for the last 16 years. He is a preaching pastor, vision caster, staff leader, and small group teacher. Marshall completed his undergraduate work at Ozark Christian College. Ozark Christian College is in the city of Joplin, Missouri, on a 60-acre campus. The college is near Kansas City, Fayetteville, Branson, and Tulsa. The college began as the Ozark Bible College in 1942 with only 16 students. Today, with over 15,000 students and over 75 years later, the OCC continues to train men and women for Christian service. Over 90% of the graduates -- that's a lot, 90% -- enter vocational and volunteer ministry. Marshall obtained his master's degree from Lincoln Christian University in Lincoln, Illinois. Lincoln Christian University is a Christian higher education community whose mission is to nurture and equip Christians with a Bible worldview to serve and lead in the church and the world. Marshall and his wife Claudia have been involved in leadership ministry for over 25 years. They have two daughters, Sydney and London. Marshall is a member of the San Diego Mountain Rescue Team. Are you still a member over there? I thought so. He loves to bike, swim, run, hike, and mountain climb. Welcome once again, Marshall. And we thank you for being here. And we ask that you pray for the United States of America, for the great state of California, Santee, and of course, the city council. And the pledge of allegiance tonight will be led by the mayor. Please rise for the invocation.
Let's pray. Gracious God of heaven, we look to the mountains that surround us, and we're reminded of your majesty and your power. Our greatest buildings are dwarfed by your creation. Lord, the scriptures teach us that you have made us in your image, and so we do build and plan. Lord, I pray for our nation. I pray for our state. I pray for our city, and I pray for our leaders. I pray that we will always build and plan with your nature in mind. So help these leaders to be full of mercy, to live and lead for justice, to guide us in paths that will honor you and care for the weak. And Lord, we thank you that you always do that, and we pray in your mighty name. Amen.
Please join me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to your republic, which stands one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Marshall? Marshall, can you come up for a second?
Sorry, Mayor.
Thank you, Marshall. Let's see. We're going to have a proclamation tonight. Anybody here from the Little League? I don't hear anybody. Must not be. Anybody here from Little League? Are you ready to come up front? Oops. What? I have to actually come up there? Yeah. How about if you're here from the Little League? Come up front here. Stand right down here, and I'll be down in just a minute. Didn't mean to scare you all.
I was waiting for you.
I'm on with the mayor. A bunch of good-looking fellows here. All right. Why don't you come on and squeeze on down here a little bit? Because I know there's somebody out here who wants to take some pictures. Little taller. All right. Well, I'll slide in the back too then. How's that sound? And we have two teams here, right? Or two leagues? West Hills and Santana, right?
Santee National.
I mean, I mean, Santee.
We get it.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. That was a kind of a slip up there. I'm used to you guys fighting that out. All right. Well, I have two proclamations here. They're both the same, but, you know, nobody's going to be excluded. Both, you know, leagues here are just as important as the other until there's a winner. All right? Did I say that out loud? I'm sorry. So here we go. It's a Santee proclamation. Whereas the Little Leagues in the city of Santee have come together to promote youth baseball for over 50 years, and whereas the city of Santee honors and celebrates our baseball athletes, both young and old, who engage in America's national pastime for recreation or competition, and whereas Little League believes in the power of youth baseball to teach life lessons that build stronger individuals and communities, joined together by one common goal, encouraging friends, families, and communities to participate in the game of baseball, thus creating a sustainable enthusiasm for the game that has produced countless family and community bonding experiences. Looking over my shoulder. You want to finish? You happy to help? Okay. All right. How am I doing so far? Okay. Thanks. And whereas the sport of baseball teaches participants teamwork, perseverance, leadership, and sportsmanship, and whereas Santee residents benefit from participating between West Hills Little League, Santee National Little League, and the city of Santee, allowing for the use of facilities such as West Hills Park and the various baseball fields used for practice and play. Now therefore, I, John Minto, mayor of the city of Santee, on behalf of this wonderful council behind me, do hereby proclaim March 2nd -- that's coming up in a couple of days, right? All right. As, get this, Little League Day. Can you imagine that? And along with that, we're going to encourage Santee residents to engage in activities that promote baseball for social connection, exercise, and play for all ages. All right. Who's going to accept these on behalf of each league? Okay. And what's your name, sir?
Mike.
Mike? Congratulations.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
And?
Nathan Almada.
Nathan. Thank you for being here, guys. Now, you want to come a little bit closer? We have an official photographer there. Any other moms or dads that want to come down here? Are you already here? Come on up. Don't be shy. Stand right up here. Anywhere you need to be to take a picture. Well, we didn't want you in the picture. Why don't you take one? Come on over here. Didn't make room for you. You're good. I'm tall. Not compared to the guy through doors down. We good to go? All right. Go baseball. You're welcome.
Thank you very much.
That's the fun part of this job, I have to admit. I enjoy that a lot. But let's get down to doing some business here. And next thing up is a presentation by the East County Advanced Water Purification Joint Powers Association on the East County Advanced Water Purification Project.
It's a mouthful, I know.
Welcome.
Thank you. Well, good evening, Honorable Mayor, Vice Mayor, and members of the city council. My name is Rebecca Abbott, engineering manager with Potter Dam Municipal Water District and the East County Advanced Water Purification Joint Powers Authority, or JPA. Thank you for the time this evening. I'm here to provide you with an overview and an update on the East County AWP project and a look-ahead schedule with an interest in those areas where the project's construction will be visible to the community in the coming months and year ahead. What is the East County Advanced Water Purification Project all about? Why are we doing this project? The East County AWP Project is a water reliability project that will create a new, local, sustainable, and drought-proof drinking water supply for East County. It's about diversifying our region's water supply and reducing our reliance on imported water. This project will create up to 30% of East County's drinking water demand. The project includes construction of a new water recycling facility, solids handling facility, advanced water purification facility near the site of Potter Dam's existing Ray Sawyer Water Recycling Facility. From there, the purified water will be transported 10 miles through a 24-inch steel purified water pipeline through Funida Parkway and Mast Boulevard, through Lakeside, where it will then be dechlorinated and discharged into Lake Jennings Reservoir. The project also includes sewer pump stations and sewer pipelines constructed deep underground underneath Carlton Oaks Golf Course, through Santee Lakes and up Funida Parkway to the new AWP facilities. A new potable or drinking water pipeline that will serve the new facilities, and in the future, a sewer rehabilitation and installation project on Mission Gorge Road West, west of the 52 and 125 interchange going all the way to the city of San Diego Mission Valley area. That project is under construction right now. And construction -- or I'm sorry, under design right now, and construction is at least a year out, so our staff anticipates being back before the city council to give another update when we have more information about that project schedule. Over the course of this calendar year in 2024, we anticipate making significant progress or continuing significant progress on the construction of the purified water pipeline and the sewer pipelines in the community of Lakeside and the city of Santee. In terms of the overall project schedule, while there have been some contract days awarded early on in the project to address environmental and weather challenges related to the exceptionally wet rainy seasons and nesting birds at and near our project site, our individual project managers are managing the schedules of the components of the project effectively to minimize significant program schedule impacts. So the JPA is on track to meet our funding commitments with this project. We anticipate commencing initial testing of the AWP facilities in late 2025 and begin sending water to Lake Jennings thereafter in 2026, at which time most of the construction activities across the whole project will be winding down, with the exception of the future sewer rehabilitation on Mission Gorge Road West. Related to the pipeline work in Funida Parkway and Mast Boulevard, this work is linear in nature and will be completed in segments generally over the course of this year pending any weather or other schedule delays. You will have noticed significant pipeline installation progress on the eastern side of Mast Boulevard and on Funida Parkway north of Lake Canyon Road. The purified water pipeline and sewer pipelines respectively have been installed in these areas as shown, and the roads are base paved to allow for traffic access ahead of the final paving of those roads, which is up next for those segments. More on final paving in a moment. The contractor doing work on the purified water pipeline will continue generally east to west along Mast Boulevard, and then on Funida Parkway and the Stowe Trail north of Funida Parkway in segments throughout the summer and into the fall. The contractor doing work on the sewer pipelines will simultaneously be completing pipeline installation on Funida Parkway and in Santee Lakes. While this schedule has some flexibility, it does also reflect quite a bit of coordination that the JPA is leading, not just between our project's two contractors doing the pipeline work, but also with the city's engineering and traffic engineering departments, other local agencies and community groups, outreach to residents who live near the work, and other contractors who may be doing work in and/or for the city of Santee, such as paving or storm drain rehabilitation. Our goal is that with all the great work being done in the city, the cumulative impacts to residents, businesses, and traffic are minimized as much as possible. For the East County Advanced Water Purification Project, what that means is especially in the area where the two pipeline packages are overlapping in Funida Parkway, the work is being coordinated in a way that allows each contractor space to work, completes the work as efficiently as possible, and limits the community impacts. Currently, there is active construction at the new treatment facility site near Funida Parkway and Ganley Road in Santee Lakes and on Mast Boulevard near Cuyamaca Street. Specifically, the work near Cuyamaca Street is being performed now in conjunction with Potter Dam to relocate a water line ahead of the purified water pipeline construction so that the pipeline is streamlined once it reaches this busy intersection. After the pipelines are installed, paving will also be completed in segments, the limits of which will be coordinated with the city's engineering department to balance the overall cost with any roadway impacts to the community. A note about paving. On a project like this, certain activities need to be completed before a segment is ready for final paving. After the trench is dug, the pipe and valves are installed, and sometimes this requires other utilities to relocate their facilities that are in the way of the pipeline alignment. And that's actually the case on Mast Boulevard East right now. That road is base paved to allow for traffic access, but it's not in its final condition. This process helps us to ensure that all the work and any associated issues that are identified through the QAQC process are addressed before final paving so that we're not digging up a freshly paved road to get back in there and fix anything and do the final restoration twice. The JPA has a team dedicated to community outreach and program communications. Public outreach is comprehensive to all the components of this project with a focus on creating awareness and preparedness throughout the community, particularly where construction activities are visible, through the use of project signage, construction update mailers, and interactive web map on our website, and more. Our website email and phone number will be on the next slide in case the project team needs to be contacted for any reason. With that, I will say thank you again for the time and do my best to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you very much. Questions? Comments from staff? Or, I mean, council?
Good job. We're watching. Thank you, councilman.
Use your microphone.
Just, just good job. We talked at the last water board meeting, so I appreciate you bringing it forward.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Great, thanks. I really appreciate it. It's been a while since we had an update, so. And I also want to make sure that everybody knows that president of the Pottery Municipal Water District is here, Bill Pomerang in the back. So, sorry, Bill, I forgot about you when I was making introductions.
Appreciate it.
Thank you very much. And that takes us to the calendar and consent calendar. Any items to be added, deleted, or reordered on the agenda? Ron?
No.
Or?
No.
I don't have anything.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to see if we can reorder number eight and nine, here nine before eight, tonight, if you guys agree.
Okay. So we would hear item number nine first? Is that what you're saying? Followed by item number eight? Is there any, anyone that has an issue with that? Or, okay, that's what we'll do. We'll reorder those items as item number nine, followed by number eight. Anything else? Vice Mayor? Okay. Ross?
Nothing for me, sir.
City manager?
Nothing, sir.
City attorney?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Any speaker slips?
None on consent, sir.
Thank you. I have a motion to approve.
Second.
Thank you. Please vote.
Turn my mic on, sorry.
Thank you. That takes us to non-agenda public comment. We have any speaker slips?
Yes, sir. We have two speakers. First one is Gina Austin. A reminder to everybody, you have three minutes, please.
Welcome.
Good evening, mayor and council members. My name is Gina Austin, and I represent an organization called ALCO that is the Association of Licensed Cannabis Operators. I'm not speaking on item seven, don't worry. And I sent you all an email with some information about the significance of intoxicating hemp and the importance of getting a ban on that, either through the regulations you're adopting currently, in the near future with some additional regulations. I took the liberty of helping Ms. Sawa and provided some draft language for ordinances. If you don't know what intoxicating hemp is, it is what people have been creatively taking out of hemp, which is legal under the Farm Bill, and converting into an intoxicant. So they take the CBD, they manufacture it, and they turn it into something else. This package here of watermelon skittles I picked up at the smoke shop right next to Petco on my way in here. These ones I've picked up in other places. The problem with this is there's no age gating. There's no packaging requirement. There's no testing. There's nothing to keep this out of the hands of youths, nor is there any stopping from putting it and being sold in locations that are right next to schools, in locations that you do not intend to allow cannabis operations. And so what we're doing in a variety of cities throughout Southern California with a large focus here in San Diego County is working with the local jurisdictions to help them create regulations to ban intoxicating hemp unless and until it's allowed through the regulated supply chain. This council has spent an enormous amount of time working on a very detailed ordinance to allow for cannabis operations within your city in certain limited areas with certain conditions. If you allow that to move forward without regulating this, what happens is those businesses have a very hard time of succeeding, and you have something you never intended to allow continuing to operate. So we're working with the local jurisdictions. We're working with the city of El Cajon, San Diego, Chula Vista, Lemongrove, La Mesa, Oceanside. All of these jurisdictions have draft language. The first city that'll be adopting the language, hopefully, will be going to Planning Commission, which will be El Cajon in March. We also expect to be going to, starting the process with a county board letter coming out in the near future to direct an ordinance, as well as the city of San Diego going to Public Health and Safety Committee. So I have available, my contact information was in the email, to answer any questions you have. I encourage this council to move forward and ban this kind of stuff in your city to allow what is legal in this.
Next speaker I have is Jack Sims.
Welcome.
Great information, brother speaker there. Greetings. Thank you for your time this evening, city council. My name is Jack Randall Sims, two-term city commissioner in the city of Encinitas. So I'm your San Diego County neighbor up to the north there. I was appointed as a commissioner in Encinitas by then-mayor, now Senator Catherine Blake's Bureau. I got to know through advocating at Encinitas City Hall meetings for the creation of ordinance to provide licensure, regulation, and tax for cannabis businesses in the city. Encinitas voters approved the proposed city cannabis ordinance in 2020. So you fast-forward four years later, and the first legal cannabis businesses are beginning to open there, making my city a safer place and creating municipal revenue and jobs. I want to take this opportunity to thank you and to thank the citizens for welcoming cannabis businesses to Santee. There's a lot of preconceived ideas as to what that will mean for the community. Three points of fact. One, legal cannabis businesses help to keep cannabis out of the hands of those who shouldn't use it, most notably children whose brains are still forming in their teenage years. Two, legal cannabis takes the plant out of the parks and streets and puts it in a legal framework which creates revenue for community improvement. And three, beyond recreational use, actual patients who need cannabis for important medical relief are able to get a state-tested and regulated product that's consistent with their medical needs. So speaking of these medical patients and needs, I'd like to wrap up here by sharing two of many positive anecdotal experiences I've had with cannabis. The first involves a patient named Marjorie M., and she is actually a resident of your fine city of Santee. Marjorie is in her late 60s and had a surgery in 2016 for a broken hip, which left her in chronic pain. She's treating the pain with a cocktail prescription painkillers. Marjorie was recommended to a medically licensed delivery service operated by a doctor in San Diego, and we supplied her with a non-psychoactive CBD tincture. The solution had a THC concentration of about 4%, which is enough to activate the CBD but not create any psychoactive effects. The results were palpable. She discontinued use of methadone and trimmed vicodin intake 70%. The second antidote is personal and involves my father, who's in his mid-80s and was having trouble walking and sleeping due to severe hip and knee pain. He lives in Texas, and he tried hemp-based CBD that he got at a grocery store, but it didn't do anything for the pain. He was visiting me in Encinitas in 2021, and I obtained for him a CBD tincture that was similarly non-psychoactive with a concentration of about 3.5%. I was confident this brand would not get him high because the product is state-regulated, thoroughly tested, and 100% consistent. The results were phenomenal. His pain disappeared when he uses the tincture, combined with a balm that he uses. He now travels out here to California regularly to purchase it for himself. Thankfully, your citizens can access this natural medicine by just driving down the road to the city of San Diego or other cities around here, but in this case, they're putting obviously those tax dollars into San Diego's coffers, not the city of Santee. With this ordinance, you've now provided your citizens access to these meds in your city, while the community receives the benefit of their tax dollars, which leads to economic development in this community. Thank you for your time. Have a nice evening.
Thank you.
No further speakers, sir.
Thank you. That takes us to item number six, which is a continued public hearing to assess community development needs and to solicit proposals for program year 2024 Community Development Block Grant, or CDBG, and home program funding consistent with the consolidated plan and finding the action is not a project subject to the California Environment Quality Act. Bill.
Good evening, Mayor Minto, Vice Mayor Trotter, and city council members. The next slide here. Tonight's public hearing is a continuation of the February 14th hearing, and its purpose is to allocate CDBG program funding for program year 2024. This slide shows the six applicants that were received for public services, the amounts they requested, and the amounts the applicants were allocated in the current program year. Based on our estimates of the program year 2024 allocation, $45,990 is available to allocate to these six or less applicants. The resolution included in the city council item directs staff to proportionally adjust up upper-down the amounts allocated tonight for the draft program year 2024 Annual Action Plan based on the actual amount of the CDBG grant received. This adjustment would also play, apply to administration and public infrastructure This slide shows the proposed administrative activities, the amounts requested, and the amounts these applicants were allocated in the current year. And finally, this slide shows the proposed public facilities infrastructure funding, the proposed $189,442, or $204,442, which are both estimates, to be allocated towards program year 2024. Public infrastructure would be used for a future phase of the citywide ADA pedestrian ramp project. The amount allocates, allocated towards the future phase of this project is dependent upon the amount awarded to the Home of Guiding Hands for their proposed concrete pathway and yard improvement at their group home on Regina's Court. This concludes my report. The next step in the process would be to complete the allocation worksheets, which we will begin when you're ready.
No public speakers? Council?
Is anybody here from the Home of Guiding Hands? Can I ask you a question real quick?
Please come forward, and please give us your name for the, just so we have it in record.
Good evening. Felix La Fuente, grant writer at Home of Guiding Hands.
Thank you. Hey, Felix, I saw that you're looking for $15,000.
Yes.
I saw that there's also $8,000 for other things.
Mm-hmm.
Have you applied anywhere else for a grant, or just us?
For this Regina's Court project, no. We have applied for other residential homes for CDBG at El Cajon and other foundations.
Okay. Have you, I saw one bid that was kind of poorly sent to me, but I did see it, and did you get other bids, or did we just get one and that was it?
I can acquire other bids.
Okay. Well, you didn't then, right?
I don't have them now, no, sorry.
In the future, if you're bringing things like this forward, I would like to at least see two bids.
Yes, sir.
I did review it, though, and it does look okay, but I was a little disappointed in the way it was presented, so.
I apologize.
Nothing for you.
Okay. Thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Just as a reminder, what we can do is on each one of these areas, we can go ahead and put in our numbers and agree to them, and then at the end, we will do an overall motion and acceptance of that. Does that work for you, Sean?
Yeah, that's right. So basically, on each one, you'll take an interim action to approve the allocation, and then you'll do one action that approves all three of the allocations together.
Perfect. And what we'll do is, we'll fill this in as we go along, and so we'll be able to see where we are for each one, and it looks like we're going to do the public services activities first. Is that correct?
We can start wherever you'd like.
We might as well go ahead and do this one, unless you guys want to trail it until the end. Good? All right, let's go. And Vice Mayor, do you want to go first?
Yes, sir.
All right.
$5,000 for Elder Help. Zero on the More Home Project. $5,000 for Meals on Wheels. $25,990 for the Food Bank. $5,000 for Santee Santas. $5,000 for Voices of Children.
And Rob, you want to?
Sure. We are only off by a thousand bucks, so I'm, I'm actually fine with exactly what you did. We're literally off by the allocation of $990.
There's a, there's a saying that great minds think alike.
And then there's us.
I know.
We're just getting lucky, yeah.
Whoops. Control V, not just V.
I know. Reviews take self before, just for God. Okay. All right. Ron?
All right. $5,000 for Elder Help. I'm willing to give $1,000 for the Home Project. Meals on Wheels, I think I have $4,000. $25,990, I went with that on the Santee Food Bank. $4,000 for Santee Santas and Voices of Children, I wanted to do $6,000.
Whoops.
That's too much. We don't have that much.
Yes.
Okay. $6,000 Elder Help, zero. $5,000 for Meals on Wheels. $22,900 for Santee Food Bank. $5,000 for Santee Santas, and $7,000 for Voices for Children. $22,9, $22,900. Oh, $990, sorry.
Okay.
Can't read my own writing.
All right, let me see what we have here. All right, we, since we have a consensus or a majority on Elder Help, I'll do $5,000 And we have a majority for Meals on Wheels, so I'll do the $5,000 there. We have a majority for the Santee Food Bank at $25,990, so we'll go that same there. And we have a consensus on Santee Santas for $5,000. Okay, so we have, let's see.
$5,000.
Yeah, let's see. Who do I want to? Yeah, let's, I'm going to stay at zero on the Home, Home More Project. And then we'll put the $5,000 on Voices for Children. So that will give us a consensus there for that one.
And I'll move my figures to match it.
You mean to match the mayor's?
Yeah.
To match the others.
Oops. That's correct. Okay. All right, then. So then, let's go ahead and move on to the next one.
Will you just move to approve that?
Oh, okay.
I'll make a motion.
Motion second. All right. Please vote. Got ahead of myself. Thanks, Counselor.
Motion carries unanimously.
You knew where we were going.
Yeah. Okay. Let's go to this one next.
All right, let's do the administrative activities. Yeah, let's go in the same order. Dustin?
And $21,000.
Well, let's just do that, then. Is everybody?
Everyone's in agreement.
Agreement on this?
I'm in agreement.
Okay. Staff, staff.
Second.
Motion second to approve the recommendation. Please vote. Okay.
Motion carries unanimously.
Okay, you want to start us off on this next one?
Yes, sir.
Well, that's waiting till we get it. You gonna do something different? Yeah, we'll go to public facilities. There we go. Dustin?
The citywide ADA pedestrian ramp, $2,004, 442.
Who's next?
I'm going to go with.
Okay.
Pardon me. I'm going to go with $189,442 and $15,000.
Ron? I actually, I had $194,442, $10,000.
You have $199, it's $194.
One.
I did that earlier.
Okay. Laura?
$189,442 and $15,000.
So that shows that we.
Have a consensus.
Have a consensus. Please.
Motion to approve the consensus vote.
Second.
I have a motion and second, please vote.
Motion carries with four eyes.
You voted no on that?
Thank you. I just want to save it.
And we, do I have a motion to approve the, all three items for the?
I'll make the motion to approve all three items.
I'll second it.
Thank you. Please vote.
Thank you.
Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you very much. And thanks for coming out, whoever came out tonight to hear on this. That takes us to item number seven, which is a public hearing and introduction and first reading of an ordinance amending Chapter 7.04 of Title VII, Public Peace, Morals, and Welfare. Case file Zebra Ocean Atom 2023-002 of the Santee Municipal Code to Allow Cannabis Manufacturing as Stand-Alone Use in the Light Industrial and General Industrial Zones and Finding the Ordinance is Covered by the Previously Adopted Mitigated Negative Declaration for the Santee Cannabis Business Ordinance pursuant to the California Environmental Quality Act.
Mr. Mayor, I need to recuse myself from this item.
Okay, thank you. If that's all it takes, we should have this more often. Exactly. So you can take your time on this, although we're going to have to listen to Dustin.
Good evening, Mayor and Council members. This item is a public hearing and introduction and first reading of an ordinance amending Title VII to Allow Cannabis Manufacturing as a Stand-Alone Use in the Light Industrial and General Industrial Zones and to Prohibit the Manufacturing of Volatile Materials. In August 2022, council adopted the cannabis ordinance, and in January of this year, City Council directed staff to amend Title VII to Allow Cannabis Manufacturing as a Stand-Alone Use in the Light Industrial and General Industrial Zones and to Prohibit the Manufacturing of Volatile Materials. Those top three sections would be revised to allow manufacturing as a stand-alone use and to clarify that manufacturing does not include volatile materials. Section 7.04.290 would be revised to add manufacturing non-volatile-only to the zoning and location requirements, and Section 7.04.390 would be revised to clarify the operating requirements for distributors. Staff recommends that council open and conduct the public hearing on the ordinance amending Title VII and introduce and conduct the first reading of the ordinance and set the second reading for the ordinance for March 13, 2024. And that concludes staff's presentation.
Thank you. Before we go on to public comment, I did want to say that, or ask, this means that they have to qualify in the same zones as, you know, retailers, correct? They can't be outside or within the 900-foot?
Yes.
Okay. Just want to make sure we got that on record. And then also, just to, some people ask, well, what kind of manufacturing would be volatile? Well, we heard earlier about some of the hash that's being used out there. Some people will take hash and use slamables to withdraw the cannabis, just for those who don't know, and the THC, and that can be very volatile. Those, usually hear about those things blowing up houses and stuff, because they use butane or other types of fluid in order to do that. So just so people know that we are going to make sure that we do not have any of that being used in our city. So let's go to speaker slips.
First speaker is Gina Austin.
Welcome back.
Hi. Once again, my name is Gina Austin. I commend the city for really a lot of hard work on this ordinance. Two pieces of information that you may not be aware of. Distribution is being prohibited unless it's part of a microbusiness. A microbusiness under state law requires three uses. That means that you couldn't have distribution, you couldn't self-distribute as a manufacturer. You can be a manufacturer, but you've got to go hire somebody else to distribute that. That may not be what you want long-term, obviously not something you probably want to deal with right this moment. Note that the City of San Diego has 20 available manufacturing production facility licenses available today that somebody could go in for, so there's not a high demand for it. And if you don't allow distribution, you may be allowing this for naught, just to let you know. The second comment relates to, actually, back to my public comment, which I didn't think I was going to be able to speak on here, but on Section 7.04.100, maximum number of types of licenses, there's an added section for clarification purposes, which says all other cannabis uses are prohibited. Because cannabis uses are not hemp uses, this does not prohibit that, and a little tweak to that language might give you just enough to have some sort of enforcement ability in the beginning without major revisions to your ordinance. Again, we are in support of this, and just wanted to bring those to your attention. Thank you.
Next speaker is A.J. Tota.
As he's coming up, Sandy, let me make sure you make a note of that, that last comment. Let's talk about that again later. Thank you.
Is this on this topic or?
Seven.
I was speaking to the county proposal for.
Oh, yes.
Okay.
That was in the wrong slot, sorry. No further speakers, sir.
Oh, great. Thank you. Okay, who wants to lead off?
I will.
Okay.
Motion to approve.
Any other comments or questions?
I just want to, Mayor, Councilmember McNally's comment about adding some language about hemp use, because we weren't aware.
I sent that to Sean earlier, the emails, so.
Yeah, Mayor and members of council will certainly take a look at that and assess it and bring back recommendations.
Thank you.
Then I'll second the motion.
All right, I have a motion second, please vote.
I just missed Vice Mayor Trotter.
Motion carries with three eyes.
Okay. You want to wait for them or get started?
Oh, of course we have to wait.
Okay. Item number eight, you can come back now. Phew. Man, I had to ask twice.
He was eating my burrito.
Sir, it's item nine.
Item nine. That's what I said, isn't it?
You said eight.
Oh.
I mean, you said nine. You're correct.
You may go far yet. All right, that takes on item number nine, which is General Fund Reserve Policy Discussion. Heather?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Mr. Vice Mayor, and City Council members. Tonight, we am bringing forward for your review and discussion a presentation on the General Fund Reserve Policy. So we'll go through tonight what the purpose of the General Fund Reserve is, some background about Santee, some discussion about the different types of reserves available or out there, and then I am looking for recommendations from you alls, and then I will come back with a policy based on your recommendations. So the General Fund Reserve is. So the General Fund Reserve is like the picture there, it's basically a rainy day fund. It assists the city in mitigating risk by protecting the city financially during economic downturns or unexpected emergencies. It also provides liquidity and establishes city creditworthiness. The purpose of tonight's discussion is to memorialize the city's reserve policy into a formal council-adopted policy if desired. Additionally, take the opportunity to revisit the city's reserve practice and make any updates also if desired. So a little bit of background about the city of Santee. We currently, Santee currently has a 20% General Fund Reserve Policy, and since its incorporation, the city has made having a healthy reserve a priority. Over the last 20 years, the reserve policy has been met except for three years due to extreme financial events, in 2012, 2013, and 2014. The city was actually hit with a one-two punch. The first punch was in 2009, which was the Great Recession. Property tax and sales tax, our two largest revenue sources, were very negatively affected. The city was still able to keep above the 20% reserve, excuse me, but in 2012, with the dissolution of redevelopment, the general fund absorbed many of the costs of the former Santee Community Development Commission. So it was, that was the second punch. So the reserve is adopted each year through the budget resolution. So the city has other funds that have quasi-reserves, and I wanted to just let you know about these as well. We have a workers' compensation fund with $1.2 million in it. This fund, the amount is an actuarial calculation of outstanding liability, outstanding liabilities. Any current-year workers' comp expenditures are actually budgeted and paid for in the department budgets, so we do not touch this balance, but it's there if we need to. The same is true with the risk liability fund. The balance there is $271,000. We also have a vehicle replacement fund with a unrestricted fund balance, which is available for emergencies of $700,000. We did dip into this a little bit in the last couple of years with all of the increasing costs for vehicles, so it was available for that use. We added this year a technology replacement fund. We are planning on an annual allocation, and this fund would cover citywide IT hardware and software updates. So a little bit, you know, steady allocations for the big expenditures down the road. So having these quasi-reserves helped protect the general fund from unforeseen events and provide solid financial planning. So as mentioned in the first slide, the purpose of tonight's discussion is to memorialize the city's reserve policy into a council-adopted policy incorporating the Government Finance Officers Association's recommendation. These recommendations on this slide are what GFOA considers to be the best practice of a general fund reserve policy. Within the policy, the type and level of reserve should be identified. That reserve amount should take into effect revenue and expenditure extremes, infrastructure, potential infrastructure failures, natural disaster, extreme events, and then the need for liquidity. The policy should also address circumstances warranting the use of funds. What is the trigger? Is it a council majority vote? In addition, a replenishment plan should be in the policy so that when reserve funds are depleted, there's a plan to restore them. A typical replenishment plan is one-two-three years, but can vary depending on the circumstances and how many funds were depleted. And a reserve minimum should be 16.67%, which equates to two months of expenditures. So there are different types of reserves, and depending on council's goals, you could basically do any type of reserve that you wanted. These three on this slide are the most common reserves. The operating reserve is your basic reserve, it's applicable to any type of circumstance, disaster, recession, et cetera. It's your basic reserve. Then there is an economic contingency reserve, which would be specific for significant revenue losses or other large economic events. This would typically have an economic trigger. I consider this to be an add-on reserve, smaller in size than an operating reserve. This would be used before, in a situation where revenues were significantly lower and funds were needed, this would be used before dipping into an operating reserve. Catastrophic event reserve is also an add-on reserve. This would be restricted for catastrophic events, natural disasters, cyber threats, anything of that nature. The trigger would most likely be the declaration of an emergency. And it's also worth noting that these reserves are buildable. They can be built up over time, depending on the funds available. They don't need to be funded right away, they can be built up through, over the years. So the next topic are assignments. Assignments are not necessarily reserves, they're different in that they're intended to be spent at a later date. So an assignment is kind of like a rule applied to excess unrestricted fund balance. It can be used to build up funding for a future program or project, build up funding to fund a reserve. Typically, a percentage of the surplus or an identified dollar amount is stated. Common types of assignments, unfunded liabilities, CIP projects, deferred maintenance. So this is a sample of, there's eight San Diego County cities and three California cities, and you can see that most cities do have an operating reserve. There's about half that have an economic contingency reserve, and then in this sampling, only one has a catastrophic event reserve. The columns with the green titles, they're, those are basically assignments, so these definitely would be spent at a later date. So with that, I'd like to present staff recommendations. Staff would like you to provide direction regarding the following items related to the General Fund Reserve Policy. The types and level of funding triggers, what triggers the use of the reserve fund, a replenishment plan, and discuss any assignments. And staff will return with a reserve policy for City Council's consideration incorporating the direction given this evening. And it also should be noted that the current reserve that we have is a good reserve, and it's very solid, and if council doesn't want to change anything, that is okay too.
Thank you. We do not have any speaker slips on this. Vice Mayor, do you want to go first on this? Rob, how about you?
I will.
All right, former Vice Mayor.
Okay. All right, I have a lot of notes, sorry. I do have some experience, actually, with this kind of funding, and I applaud staff. We actually have a good system, a solid system in place. I do want to change it, though. I want to enhance it, is what I'll say. So I thought a lot about this, and that's why I asked Heather to pull some data for all of us, basically where we were each fiscal year for the last 20 years, how much we had in our reserves, so that's that list. And I think what we need is a couple of things. One, a budgetary allocation. So I like the 20%, I'll start with saying that. But then add a budgetary allocation, so this would be a line item in the annual budget specifically designated for replenishing the reserve fund. This demonstrates a commitment to rebuilding the reserve and ensures that it receives priority consideration during the budgeting process, and for right now, it could be zero because we're not in that situation. But we should, if we don't already have some kind of line item to say we're going to replenish when we dip into this reserve fund, we should have it. And the reason why I say that is, you know, when we do go back to the actual mid-year budget, what I found in these last couple of years is that we have our council priorities, sorry if you can't hear me, we have our council priorities, and then we have this budget review, and we discuss it, and then something will come up that we didn't anticipate, and what comes to mind is how much the lighting at the ball fields cost? And I think the initial estimate was somewhere around $700,000, and I think it was closer to $2 million. In my mind, that is an unfunded thing that should come, that money should have come from the reserve, the 20% reserve, and then we have a policy in place to replenish the reserve, because that wasn't one of our priorities, it wasn't a line item in a budget we could review anywhere, and it was what you call an emergency, whether it be capital or whatever. So that's why I say add the line item, so we have a way to look back to that. This is somewhat related to this process, but I don't know if we have a routine debt management process in place already, so do we have existing debt that we refinance to secure more favorable terms, or?
The city currently does not have any long-term debt. The only debt that we actually have are capital leases.
Will we have one when we do the community center?
I don't think so.
Okay.
No.
Okay. And then, of course, the reserve replenishment policy, so establish a formal policy or guideline outlining the conditions and mechanisms for replenishing the reserve fund. And I have a few examples. So there's an annual surplus allocation idea, which is, say, our reserve policy is 20%, and then we can allocate any portion of any annual budget surplus to replenish the reserve fund if we have a deficit based on some unforeseen circumstance. But the challenge into that model is that, you know, you have to dip into reserves, and if you have some kind of emergency situation, like a lot of people probably have the same one, so I don't really think that the annual surplus allocation would work, but maybe an incremental replacement or replenishment would work. And this is establish a schedule for incremental replenishment of the reserve fund for a specific period, and I like the idea of over three years, I think that's manageable. Allocate a predetermined amount each year from the general fund budget to replenish the reserve until it reaches the target level. So for example, allocate 1% of the operating budget each year for three years to replenish the reserve fund. And I think that's more realistic, because it allows for budget cut triggers, which if we were in that situation, then every department would have to look at budget cuts to replenish the reserve, and I don't know if we've ever had to do that, so. And that would become part of our strategic recovery plan. And, let's see, so this is the formula that I wrote. Based on the 20 years, it seems like the sweet spot for us is that, is that 22% that we have? So at 22%, 1% of this fund, once we hit 22%, our reserve is 20, but once we hit 22%, 1% of that surplus would go fund our line item that I mentioned before, but then we would have a ceiling of 5% on it. And the reason I say that is because you don't want to build that up to just infinity, and I think the council likes to be able to address annual needs annually while we have the money. As I always remember, you said, fix the roads when you have the money, right? When we first started, when I first started. So I don't want to just say put everything extra into this, you know, reserve replenishment fund, but at least when we're at 22%, the trigger is now we put 1% into that, and we have some money there in case we have an emergency. And then once it hits 5% in that reserve, then all the extra above and beyond that goes to annual needs. And I say that because this year we're at 31%, so we could hit the 22%, put us 1% aside, and still have money to work with tonight. So that's my formula.
Did you want to max that out per year?
It's 1% a year, maxed at 5%. Whenever, you know, if we have five years of over 22%.
We have 5 million, do we want to max it maybe at 500,000, or do you want to just 1%?
Just 1%.
Which is, okay. You know, I like the 20%, frankly. I'm looking at Poway, which, you know, I'm drooling over Poways, but 45%. But I'm also looking at 15%, and I know the way MTS is with their reserves, so.
What's theirs?
They're gonna be broken five years. But other than that, they're usually about 12. So, basically, well, I think if we stayed at 20, I kind of like part of what your idea is, but I would like to put some kind of cap on it, but I'm okay with your plan there.
All right, thank you. I have a question, though. On the city of Santee background, on slide number five, we point out the reserves, for instance, workers' compensation, risk liability, and vehicle replacement, and technology replacement fund, which doesn't have a number yet. My question is basically, are these restricted funds, or can they be spent down if we don't want to, like, I'm just taking the big number. Let's say they were short someplace because of needs, could we take that 1.2 million or a portion of that 1.2 million? Or are we making those restricted so that they are there to cover those liabilities? For obvious reasons, in this one, you want to make sure that you're always covering your liability, which is obviously the workers' compensation, et cetera. Does that question make sense, the way I put it?
For workers' compensation and risk, I would actually, well, let me back up. They're not restricted by law or legally restricted or by council, but they are kind of like insurance, so they are our insurance policy. I would not recommend spending those, for sure, but the vehicle replacement, that is not restricted either, but is a cushion for an emergency.
Okay. Well, the reason why I'm asking that question, and also, would that be the same on slide number eight, where we went into general fund reserve discussion and the assignments and rules and things of that nature? Because we... Oops. This is where I made this note, it says, general fund reserve discussion. There we go. So, because it's also talking about building programs, and I think that's kind of the same thing that we were talking on that previous slide about the liabilities and all that kind of stuff. Because I think that if we do create a policy, we should create a policy that says these are restricted funds. And that's so that you don't, you really don't have to think about it, you know you're not taking money from there, because let's say, you know, five years or 10 years, it's a different council, they haven't been through this, you know, some of the staff is gone, doesn't really remember the discussion that was had today, and they're gonna go, oh, well, we got $1.2 million, and somebody didn't catch anywhere, we didn't have a policy on it, and they go, let's spend that money, we got it. And I think that's where some governments get in trouble, because they spend money that they've been saving for their rainy day. And we never know what the state of California is going to do by hitting us up for, or CalPERS, I should say, or even, you know, as far as workers' comp, what are they gonna hit us up with next? So I think that deciding on a policy to restrict those funds for what they were meant for is a good idea, and...
And then I have a question about workman's comp, because I agree with that, but I think in the budget part, it shows three different areas we're over that we have to take from the surplus that we have right now to cover some workman's comp.
So in the current, for the current year, we budget all of our projected workers' comp costs and our actual costs in the department budget, so we don't touch the 1.2. That just sits there all by itself, no ins and outs or anything, we just, we budget for the current year and we pay the current year. So what you're seeing in the mid-year is just the increase from what our projection was to what the actuals are.
Great.
Did we ever go to the workman's comp, 1.2 million then?
No, it's there only, it's there for an emergency, and it's the actuarial calculated our liability, and it's also the fact that we have that amount in that fund helps with our calculation for, on our financial statements, our liability, it helps with that, because it kind of offsets it.
And my guess is that the... And my guess is that the reason why we would call that a insurance policy is if we have someone who is, maybe gets killed in line of duty, whether it's firefighters or otherwise, and there could be some kind of liability brought forward. Somebody could say that, you know, we, you know, didn't do something right as far as safety goes, or whatever. And then, so they're going to make a big claim on workers' comp. And we have to be, you know, ready for that. Now, it might be a little bit different the way I'd, you know, from what I described, but, you know, my experience is that, you know, families who are injured by something that happens to a loved one on the job are looking to be compensated any way they can. And we have to be prepared for that. And so that's why, another reason why I would want that restricted.
I definitely want it restricted, but I just, that's, is that how this fund would be used? If there was some crazy amount, are you just using it to get the, the front-end rate?
Well, I mean, we use it to, to have that backup in case, in case something does happen. So it's kind of a buffer for the general fund, just an added layer of buffer. And then we use it also for calculating the rate.
Have we ever dipped into that fund?
Not that I'm aware of. I, in the past, let's see, four years, we've been adding to it. We've added, I think it was in 2022, we added 200,000 to it. I think 2023, we added 150,000 to it to get it up to that 1.2, which matched our actuarial liability. But is, I don't think that we have dipped into it, at least it hasn't been any time lately.
Heather, can you give us an example of when that would be used? Just so we're all on the same page, not guessing. When, when would that money be used? When, when would we have to use that? What is a scenario?
I would think that if we were in a very bad budget scenario and we were, we were out of money, or we needed it for, for, that was a way to pay, make the payment. It's kind of like a, an add-on reserve, where we would use it for, for workers' comp claim that we, you know, if we needed to.
Okay, that's.
But we would have to be pretty, you know, fiscally, you know.
Depleted?
Yeah, depleted, yeah.
Yeah, fair enough, thank you.
Great. And then, also, for me, I always like having more in my bank account than what I think I'm going to ever need. So 20%, yeah, well, that sounds good. 25 sounds good, 45 maybe a little bit excessive. Well, if you have it. But I think that, that reaching for a little bit higher goal, maybe even a 22%, 23%, is better, because you just, you never know what's going to happen. And today, I think it was what, two, two months' worth of reserve would cover certain things.
Well, I think that was as a minimum.
Yeah, the 16, 16.67% is the, the recommended minimum.
Right. But I'm thinking bigger than the, you know, the minimum. Because I know that if, if I'm just thinking about my household needs and I don't have a savings, which a reserve account really is, kind of, I think that's, I'm really doing myself a disservice, so I don't want to do a disservice to the community. And then also, as far as some of the things that we do, I think we should have a designated amount of money that gets put away every time, you know, there's a, you know, there's money that's been released, for instance. And that could cover capital improvements projects. Doesn't mean that we have to spend it every single time. But for failures, I know that we, we've talked about this before. You have failures in streets or other things that cause a high level of monetary damage, for lack of a better term. Remember on.
Oh, yeah.
Earl Street, we had that big sinkhole?
Yep.
The only thing that we got lucky on there is the fact that.
It wasn't on our.
Audrey Damm had to pay for it because it was their failure. But what if that was our failure? And that was devastating, would have been very devastating. And probably may even went through a big chunk of that reserve.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, because you remember that.
Oh, I totally do. And I remember times where we, we did have 22 and 23% in reserves, you know. But here's my other side of that, if that's okay?
Okay.
Other side of that is, and, and I understand what everybody's saying over here. We've got to have reserves, and 20% has been kind of our minimum that we've utilized in the past as, as our, as our goal minimum. More is always better, but the reality is, we, we have work to do now. We, we have work to do now, we have roads that need to be paved now. We have some of our parks that need repair already now. We have, as we're talking about, the, we're going to be talking about the community center that needs help now. We've got the AstroTurf or the synthetic turf at, and Town Center Community Park East needs repair now. There's a number of things that, that we really, because we unfortunately didn't do, put a lot of money into these things in the past, we're paying a little bit more for that now. We've been blessed to have a little bit of an excess at this moment that we maybe should be utilizing to take care of these issues so they don't, they don't fester and get even worse into the future. I like the 20% budget as it is, or the 20% reserve as it is. The more, I mean, I understand restricting it to catastrophe and, all right, we've got to have a majority vote of the council in order to, to go past that 20% reserve minimum. I'm fine with that. But until we have these other things taken care of, I don't, I don't see putting more money into that reserve until we've taken care of the issues that are imminent right now. That's my actual concern. The longer we wait to do that stuff, because we want to put extra money away, the more it's going to cost us in the near future to take care of it then. And so I, you know, I prefer to pretty much keep it the way it is if you want to add a restriction to the liability fund and, or the workers' comp fund and, and the other, the other two funds. You want to add a restriction to those that are already in, in budget and done and already calculated for, totally fine with that as well. But, and once again, a written policy of it takes a majority of the council to approve going into the reserve fund at any time. I don't think we need to go into, well, it has to be a declared catastrophe, we have to do this. Once you start restricting it too much, then it gets very convoluted, in my opinion. So a majority of the council that says, hey, yep, we need this for whatever reason may, that may come up, I'm totally fine with that. But other than that, I think we, you know, instead of putting more money away, then we need to spend the money that we've got over and above our reserves to take care of the things that we're supposed to be taking care of as council members.
Well, I just, I just want to clarify. I'm not in disagreement with you, it's just, I'm looking for a better way to account for it. Because what I feel like is that our council priorities, you know, get knocked down because something like, you know, this synthetic turf item comes up, and that's 660,000, or the, the ball field lights, or whatever it may be. And I, I'm looking at, you know, the council priorities that we all agreed on. One is the future financial software upgrade, and we need to do that. And I don't know if that, it's fully funded. And maybe, and so we need, so if, if an item comes before us that's 660,000, and we're all going, oh, my gosh, we didn't, there should be a process in place to, to move that money from the reserve, because that shouldn't impact our council priorities. That's what, that's where I'm coming from. So there's that, you know, Big Rock Park, we've 770,000 there. There's been some small financial investments, very minor, not, not even probably 100,000. But we, you know, after the community center is done, we know we have to do that next, but this one will now jump those two items. And, and the community center is one of ours. And I think that the development impact fee study is all funded and done. But, you know, I just want to make sure that we're always staying on track with our, our council priorities, which mostly we are. But when we have a wild card thrown in, we don't have a process in place to address that. So that's what I'm looking to do. And that's what, that's where I came up with the 22%, just based on 20-year averages and this and that and the other thing. To make sure that, okay, well, if something does come up that we all didn't know about, but we have to take care of it, moving forward, we, we don't lose our priorities and we still have a way to replenish that fund over three years through the budget process, instead of a surprise right now.
I think we've kind of been doing that, though, haven't we?
No.
No, well, in, in some ways.
Right.
Yeah, it's kind of a yes and no. And the reason why it's a yes, because staff has done such a great job of making sure that we don't overspend. And, and the other side of no is because there's nothing written down. And so, so anyways, I, I think there's some very good discussion that we've had here tonight, great ideas, and that's, that's what's so cool about what we do, is having our ideas shared. My only question now is, see, manager, did you, do you have anything to add? And also, have you heard, and, I didn't think you were going to say any, you told me no.
You asked if I want to speak first.
He didn't say he didn't want to speak.
Yeah.
I stand correct, I'll sit corrected, how's that sound? You know, go ahead.
Yes, sir, thank you. All right, so, you know, this, this has been a big, a big deal, budgets, you know, for the last three years, we've talked a lot about this, and a lot of things that we haven't, haven't been putting money away for, haven't had a plan for in priorities, right? It's all these different terms in there. Spent a lot of time thinking about this, and that's why I asked to have this go first, because it does affect our next discussion with our, you know, mid-year budget and our budget going forward in the, in the new fiscal year. There's, I do believe that we need a policy for this. I, I think it's something that, that we need to create, it's something that, that should be in place. So Heather, thank you for bringing this forward, because it's, we're there, right? But I, I'm, I'm good with the 20% also. I've thought a lot about this, you know, going up, going down. It's always good to have more money. It's always good to save more money. It's, it's, it's a blessing that we have a, a, extra money in our reserves today, right? But we also, just like you talked about, Rob, priorities of fixing roads and public safety, things like that, we also have an obligation to spend the people's money, too. You know, to, to fund what is expected with, with the tax money and the dollars that are brought into the city from sales tax and, and property tax revenue. And those expectations, you know, start at those top things that I just mentioned, paving the roads and public safety. And we go down from there when we hit priorities. The city, the constituents expect us to put these dollars back into the city. And if the more that we hold on to them and hold on to them, that's not pertinent on us. As much as I don't like that, being physically conservative, you know, it, there's a balance that we have to figure out, what's, what's good for the people, what's good for us in there. Laura, I want to go back, if you don't mind indulging me here a little bit, on this budget, budgetary allocation and the surplus, because I think you're on to something there, and I, and I was trying to just make sure that I'm understanding it all the way through. The replenish part of it, I agree with you, three years. You know, you can't replenish something in one year, it just doesn't work, right? You have to have. Necessarily. So I think the three-year timeline to replenish something, if we dip under whatever that, that threshold is, have a maximum in there. I didn't understand the routine debt management part of it, that, that I didn't fully, I don't know if that's part.
No, it was just more of a question.
Okay. I wrote a question mark next to it.
We're good, we're good.
All right. So budgetary allocation, annual surplus, can you give me another recap here? Like what, what that means, I guess?
So the annual surplus, that was one of the options, and I, I don't think. I'm sorry, it's not. I don't think that's the best option. I think I'm leaning towards incremental replenishment, which is kind of what we just talked about. And what I mean by, by that is, so we have the 20% reserve. At 22%, which that's why I looked at 20 years, how many times did we go 22% or more?
So as our reserves increases.
We put 1% in that line item that I talked about for 660,000, blah, blah, blah. And then 23, 24, 25, 26, all.
I'm missing that line item, too.
I get that, I get that part.
I'm missing the line item.
So this is an assignment, like a separate fund, like a.
Is that an O's fund?
I just said we would add a budgetary, a line item in the annual budget specifically designated for replenishing the reserve fund. And, and that's where that 1% would go. That, that 1% goes because.
So it, it actually, it starts with what you were talking about at the beginning, is not taking the money out of the general fund, not taking it from another source when we have a unforeseen thing. You take it out of reserve first and not out of, again, the general fund or another sourceable, taking it away from a CIP project or something else. And then as we dip down, we need to replenish it, okay?
Right, it's just, it's procedure, yes.
Yeah, okay.
It's a no-shoot fund.
Yeah, I, I thought I understood most of it, but I just really wanted to get that out there because I, I think you're on to something there. I, I think it's, it's important that we have a process to replenish it. Number one, if we do dip down, but the process of how we, how we allocate the funds. I mean, that's really what this all, a lot of this comes down to, is it, how do we take, where do we get the money from to do what we have to do?
So what's 1% of the budget?
Be, be 580,000, roughly.
So, yeah. That's one year of unfunded thing, almost. I mean, two years, that unfunded issue that we have that doesn't align with our top 10 council priorities or anything that we've seen in the budget that we've approved over the last year. It's a, it's a wild card, as, there would be a process in place. What, what hap, to your point, Vice Mayor Trotter, what happens when these things happen? And they do happen, so I'm not, it's not about that. It's that another department has to cut, cut, cut to make up for this thing that none of us budgeted for. And, and that's the whole point of a reserve.
Which is why we, this is how we've used a reserve, it's just, we haven't had it.
We don't use a reserve.
Well, we actually, we have.
Well, yeah, I mean, they, we have.
And it's, and money, and then we find money to put it back in, in other ways, later down the road. It's, but, so you're, you're proposing a, a new line item in the budget, the just-in-case fund.
Right. And I say, and I'm saying this year it's zero, well, maybe not $0, because we do have this thing in there, but.
And anytime we.
Pay for all of it now.
Fair enough, anytime we go over 22%.
1% goes in there.
Okay.
And that's it. Until it, and when that fund reaches 5%.
Of the overall budget.
Of the overall budget.
No more funds go into that.
It's capped.
And Mayor Minto, you mentioned something about designated money put away. That, is that similar to this scenario?
Restricted funds, very, very similar. It's, it's where you just, it's said you can, like, for instance, we're going to buy water and we're not buying anything else with that money. So that means you're not buying soda pop with that water.
With that water?
With that money, I mean.
Thanks. You know, I, you know, we obviously have a, we talked about it last discussion, right? We have major issues with our facilities, either being under maintenance or not being built, you know, for our public safety and things. So you talk about, you know, a plan, that how do we get money in the future? Because, you know, we're, we're going to talk about it here in the next item, the turf, the synthetic turf, is we have to replace this, this turf at Town Center Park that was built, put in, what, 14 years ago, 16 years ago, whatever it was? That has a life expectancy of 10 years, right? And we don't have any dollars, like you said, in a fund to replace it. And this is, you know, everything has life, we're going to get to that in a minute, but.
Yeah.
So I get too far into that, but, I mean, that's some of the conversation, I guess, what we're talking about, right? That's why I wanted to have this conversation a little bit before, because it does affect, you know, possibly some of the things going forward, in theory, of percentages and numbers of what were above our, our standard policy today, right, right now.
Because nobody, nobody wants to think of those things when they're brand new, because they're brand new, and so, hey, okay, they're brand new, we don't have to worry about the maintenance of it. But over time, it's going to not be brand new. It happened to our roads, which is why we're dealing with what we're dealing with now. When the City of Santee was incorporated in 1980, it was all brand new. I mean, and we've had brand new roads built since then, and many of them, the last 20 years.
Trying to get to your, more of your questions here, Heather, I apologize. So I'm more in favor of keeping at the 20% as I've looked at the up and down and the advantage and the disadvantages. You know, the, the type of policy that we use today, this, I don't know what the term was, I forgot now, drawing a blank, whatever the type we use today, it gives us the most flexibility in, in what we do. And we got to make sure that we are flexible enough to, to do what we have to do. We don't over encumber, encumber ourselves that, and restrict ourselves too much, right? Right, that we have to make sure that we, or, again.
We're not hand tied.
You're not hand tied, but we're being pertinent with the people's money, we're, we're doing the right. Prudent, that's what I meant to say, thank you. So I'm, the 20%, Heather, I, you asked about the replen, if we do an replenishment, replenishment fund or our plan, one to three-year standard, I think makes a lot of sense. The majority council vote for any circumstances warranting the funds, absolutely. I think there has to be a, you know, a majority vote by the, the council to dip into a fund or use funds or, or anything above. Somewhat, what way we do it right now. Somewhat, what way we do it right now is the right, or is a good way that we're doing it? I think we do need to memorialize it though, in a policy here. I think it'll help not only us, it'll help in the future. From my understanding, it'll help actually our financial position a little bit more that we have, we have a real, we have a formalized policy that we can utilize to show the strength of the city's, you know, finances and stuff too.
So if I could say this, that, because I want to hear from city manager though. But I think so far where we've gone with this, there's a lot of information that I've been seeing a lot of note-taking done. And so we might be almost to the point where we give direction for staff to bring back actually a draft policy on this. And if everybody feels comfortable we can do that, let me go ahead and hear from, say, manager first and make sure that everything is understood that we've talked about tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Certainly we'll consult with Heather, she's going to be a big part of any action going forward. But it sounds, from what I'm hearing from council, that you like many of the concepts that our Councilwoman Koval brought forward, but it seems most of you like the flexibility of the policies we have now, but to memorialize those, to put that down in writing with obligations on the part of the City of Santee, if we want to dip into the reserves, what that would take, and if we do that, what would be the replacement policies, how we would handle that. And if, I just want to make sure the 22% plus one, plus one, plus one.
It's just 22%. 22% plus one, and then over three years?
Okay, so.
I have it written down, I can just hand it.
I'm just curious, it sounded to me mostly that we were looking at keeping it at 20% rather than 22?
Correct. It's 20%, but when the surplus, the trigger for the surplus is 22%, where we would put 1% in the line item that I said, the annual surplus allocation line item in the budget and max it at 5%.
So just from my understanding, and Heather, you can correct me if I, if you've got it, that's great, we would have that set aside in a separate fund, is that a part of the reserve or is that?
It's reserve, it's general fund reserve unrestricted, but it's to address, it's a way to properly address something like the lights at the ball field, the things that we didn't see.
Okay.
From what, may I chime in? From what I, if I'm understanding correctly, Laura, the reserve is 20%. Anything above 22, we take 1% of that and we put it into kind of like an assignment, up to 5%.
Yep.
So effectively, that's almost a 25% reserve if it never gets, you know, if we never draw it down or anything like that.
Correct. But it does seem like every year, and it, I don't want to say every year, but a lot of years, we have something come up that's, you know, from half a million to $2 million that wasn't addressed. And so this is a way to use the general fund reserve as it's intended and then also replenish it and not steer, not have all the department heads go, oh, well, you got to cut out these things because, you know, we, there's this unexpected budget issue that arose. There should be a team effort to replenish it, is what I'm trying to say.
Okay.
Okay, we'll take a stab at that and bring it back.
I know. Here's my.
Well, you know, that's the one good thing about, like I said, having all these different ideas coming up and we all seem to be very similar in thought here with just a few variations on what we think is a good deal. Not everybody's going to get what they want, it's like buying a car. Dealer's not getting what they want, we may not get what we want, but you know what, at the end of the day, we bought a car, so. It's not, it's not a house, Rob. All right then, that takes us to item number, item number nine. City clerk, which item did I just call?
You called item number eight, sir.
Oh, thank you. That was a setup. So fiscal year 2023-24, operating budget update and resolution amending the fiscal year 2023-24 budget. This is a mid-year report.
Heather?
Good evening again, Mr. Mayor, Mr. Vice Mayor and council members. This is the 2023-24 mid-year operating budget update. So I thought we'd start off with how we did in fiscal year 22-23. We closed the year with $17 million in unrestricted fund balance. This was $4 million more than projected when we did the adopted budget. The primary drivers of this increase is 1.3 million increase in revenues, primarily property tax and sales tax and expenditure savings across all departments. We had a lot of personnel salaries, personnel salary savings and unfilled positions, primarily in finance, engineering, community services, HR. We also had some savings in the sheriff contract due to vacancies and insurance premium savings, and then we saved on utilities. So stepping into this fiscal year, so our financial position has improved from the original adopted budget by 5.2 million. Part of that is the $4 million from the previous slide. The rest of it is estimated revenues are now stronger than initially projected by about 2.4 million. So our projected reserve balance is 17.3 million at June 30, 2024. This is a snapshot of the mid-year amended budget. Revenues are projected to be 59 million, expenditures 57.2 million. That leaves us revenues over expenditures of almost 1.8 million. We've got some transfers in, the other financing sources, of 2.8 million. This is mostly ARPA, which we'll get to on a later slide. Some transfers out to other operating funds, about 660,000, and then transfers to capital improvement program, 3.6 million. This also includes ARPA. And then the unfunded liability payment or the additional discretionary payment to CalPERS of $600,000. This leaves us with an available fund balance of 17.3 million. So we'll start off with revenues. We're looking at $59 million, 2.4 million overall increase in projected revenues from the original adopted budget. Our major revenue, or our biggest revenue is property tax, 25.1 million in total. This is about 485,000 more than the original budget estimate and $1 million more than 2022's actuals. This is driven by a 7.1% increase in net assessed valuation. Our next biggest revenue source is sales tax. We are actually projecting almost a million dollars of an increase from the original budget estimate and about 332,000 more than the ending balance of last fiscal year. This increase is primarily due to growth in the following areas, building and construction. We had very strong growth, general consumer goods, mediocre growth, and then the county pool allocation. We had growth in this area, but this was mostly driven by the building and construction Some other notable revenues, transient occupancy tax, we are projecting 790,000 in annual revenue. Our franchise fees, we're looking at 3.8 million in total annual revenue with large increases from the original estimate. Emergency medical services, 5.1 million in revenue. This is, this should be noted, this is a one-to-one relationship with the EMS department or the EMS division of the fire department, so this matches whatever is spent in that division. And then building permit revenue, 1.1 million, this is a $200,000 increase. So our 2023-24 expenditures, we're looking at 57.2 million, 682,000 over our current We'll begin here with personnel costs. We are requesting a building development technician. This is a upgrade from a part-time position to a full-time position. And along with the, along, there is an increase of $50,000, but we're also expecting savings in the actual, in the contract staff costs. The next item is employee benefit, employee benefit elections. This is just a correction to what we assumed when we were creating the budget to what actual, what the employees actually took for elections. And then part-time salaries in the finance department. So these are the other general fund depart, or other general fund expenditure increases by department. City manager and economic development, we've got money budgeted for Empower East County Business Fund project. This was originally in the ARPA fund, but it was requested that this not come from ARPA money so, and that it be a general fund expense, so we are making that adjustment. Surplus land disposition, city attorney, community-oriented policing and cannabis implementation, information technology. We have the GIS consultant that we will be using until we can get that position filled. Finance, credit card processing fees, fire station infrastructure services, financing analysis, community services and public service, workers' compensation costs and electricity costs, and then fire, also workers' compensation costs, and the replacement of obsolete radios. And then in addition, there is the synthetic turf field replacement, and this would be a transfer from the general fund to the CIP fund. So the American Rescue Plan. So due to ARPA spending deadlines and current project demands from the engineering department, we are proposing to swap the funding sources for the following CIP projects. And the way it would work is we would transfer this, the amount of these four CIP projects from ARPA, the ARPA fund into the general fund, and then from the general fund, we would transfer the same amount into the, into the CIP fund. There's also $50,000 here for the river ordinance enforcement. This was, was mentioned in the city attorney's budget. And then 40,000 mentioned earlier from Empower East County Business Fund project. So now to the general fund unrestricted fund balance. As mentioned, we have 17.3 million or 30.3% of general fund operating expenditures. And then the balance available beyond the 20% reserve is 5.9 million. Considerations for use of unrestricted fund balance, of course, it's typically used for only one-time uses, not used for ongoing operational programs. So the first item would be to increase the general fund reserve, which we've already gone over. Another option would be an additional discretionary payment to CalPERS. There's the potential to allocate funding to the pavement repair and maintenance program. As noted earlier, the pavement management report recommends an annual paving budget of 4.5 million in order to get our streets to a PCI of 70. In fiscal year 24-25, we have 4.0 million allocated for streets. And then in fiscal year 25-26, we have 2.1 million allocated for streets. So $500,000 in fiscal year 24-25 would get us to the 4.5 million, and then 2.4 million in fiscal year 25-26 would get us to the 4.5 million. Other CIP projects include the community center. The way that the community center is set up in the CIP budget now, bidding and construction is programmed in fiscal year 25-26, basically because we're waiting for the accumulation of development impact fees to cover the construction. We do have a state grant as part of, as a funding source for the community center and it's 4.5 million. There is some concern regarding the state's budget and whether or not the state would claw that, those funds back. They should, in a perfect world, they would be spent today. We've also just, I think it was last night, received new budget numbers for the community center. It's, the budget has increased by 1.5 million, and I believe they're due to new building standards. I think engineering can speak better on that than me. And then general fund, so a general fund contribution of 1.5 million could fast-track the project to fiscal year 25, or 24-25. And this is, of course, as long as there is enough development impact fees received. And then finally, the financial system ERP. Our current software is sunsetting in March 2027. We have in the CIP budget, an estimated project budget of 1,900,000 of that is unfunded. So staff's recommendation would be to adopt the resolution approving the amended fiscal year 23-24 budget as outlined in the report, approve the addition of a full-time development technician position in the planning and building department, and provide direction on the use and appropriation of excess general fund unrestricted fund balance.
We have no speaker slips. Dustin?
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor. I'll go first, knock this one out real quick. So I just want to make a couple comments, actually going to be directed at a couple of the, you guys, the staff members, real quick. So in the building permit revenue, I want to thank Aaron for hard work. Some of it's not your result, but it is your result, you know, why we have a $200,000, you know, uptick in your original estimate, but the statement in here, I'm going to read it out loud to everybody. "When the building department function was brought in-house last year, the department changed the way the revenue was budgeted for better reflect the way services are currently provided based on reduced use of contract staff." So kudos to you for everything you've done in that department to get us where we are today. Thank you. Next one, actually it's going to be for Carl because I know where this is coming from. So Carl, can you tell me why we need a window tending on building four?
I actually put a thermometer to that this last summer, and we had temperatures in excess of 85 to 87 degrees in the cubicles and over 100 against the windows.
So is that, in the cubicles, how far are you at, five feet, 10 feet, 20 feet away?
Five feet.
Five feet, yeah, so it's mostly everything against there, right?
Yeah, it's pretty much all the office cubicles that are on the west-facing side of building four, they get extremely hot, they just reflect right off the windows and they're, they're just heated excessively.
It's, you know, it's this one thing, obviously you don't want to spend money unnecessarily, but I think it's important that we take care of the staff. You know, the staff has our support to make sure they're comfortable at work and doing what they need to do, right? So just wanted to kind of throw it out there. Yeah, you know, so. Next one's going to be Nick. So the turf, I'm 100% in support of allocating these funds to you to get this thing done. I don't know how you're going to get it done or what you're going to do or whatever it is, but we need to get this done. There's no question about it, right? So really, I think the understanding is, most of this stuff has like a 10-year life expectancy.
That's correct. The fields were actually put into place in 2010, the expectancy of about nine to 10 years, we're encroaching on year 14 at this point, and they're in poor condition, sir.
So my challenge to you, or my ask of you, is to come back, not only with all the plan, how you're going to replace them, but how you're going to replace them in the future.
Yes, sir, we already have a plan.
If you're here in 10 more years, or if somebody else is, that we have a mechanism or a way to do that.
Well, I don't have any gray hairs, so I'll be here in 10 years.
Okay, let's hope so. Whoa, whoa, whoa. All right then, actually, I appreciate one of my colleagues, I don't know which one, got our priorities actually brought to us today again.
It's the nerd.
It's the nerd. So every two years, if the public doesn't know, we sit down and as we get a new council, we sit down and go through the priorities for our council and give staff some direction on what is most important things that we can get done here in the city. So just want to read two things before I go into my, finish my thing here. So not in any particular order, it just happens to be this way numerically. First one is focus on improvements to the fire station facilities and services. Second one is continue to focus on expanding road paving and other infrastructure improvements. That's two of the 10 priorities in here. Several of the priorities have already been taken care of, are implemented, some are ongoing and some are forthcoming still, I guess, right? So we have 5.9 million above our reserve right now that we can use and allocate somewhere and make, make better use, you know, here within our city. So some of the things you got asking about, I actually, just give my recommendations here, so go with it. I think we need to take $900,000 and put it into the ERP replacement project immediately. I think this is one of the highest priorities, you know, coming forward for us right now. Second is the paving, repair and maintenance. I think we need to take $500,000 and 2.4 million, which is a total, total 2.9 million, and put it into our, our plan and our goal for our repair, paving and maintenance. and put it into our, our plan and our goal for our repair, paving and maintenance. That leaves a difference of, what did I have the math? Yeah, it's three, about 2.2 million dollars difference in there. The sec, the last thing is there, we have a thing here about fire facilities and services. We've talked, we talked a lot about fire facilities and services in, in the last while, right, chief? It's a huge priority, it's a huge issue that we have. And I know this is not the norm that, that we do with these type of funds, but I do believe that we need to seriously look at funding the six additional firefighters that the fire chief asked for, as, you know, as soon as possible. If it's not in this, you know, allocation here, we're doing it here in the fiscal year coming up, but we do have the funds to do that now. And I do think those are the three highest priorities for me, for our, for our city.
Do you have the turf in there too, or not? Is that already in there?
The turf's already in there, because everything, the additional staffing, all the things the other departments already asked for was what, 682,000 or something like that? That's already all built in there. So that's, that's all within their, their ask or their, their recommendations to, for their departments. And then there's still 5.9 million dollars beyond that.
So 2.9, I'm okay with the roads and, because we have to fix the roads. And I can't count on Pottery Dam to do them all. And 900,000 for the software, so it's good to me. And I'm sure somebody else is going to have another one. The fire, I could put part of it in there, but I think we could find another item, put it all in there.
Yeah, I, I, like I said, I've said a thousand times, you know, the main priority that we're supposed to have up here, we fill potholes, make sure streetlights work, and make sure when you call 911, somebody shows up. Those are the main priorities we have as a council. Everything else after that is the fun stuff. So roads, we, we made a plan to get to 70%. We wanted to get to 70%. We have, we've, we now have a, a way by which we can get closer to that, continue to get closer to that with this extra money. So definitely allocating, it was Heather, there she is, allocating those extra funds to the shortfalls in the coming years. I'm 100% supportive of doing that. Obviously, we need, we're going to need to pay for the finance program, software. I think we should have that implemented this year, right? Kathy's going to make sure of that. And as far as funding the, funding the firefighters, our paramedics and, and the staff, I, we're, we don't have a place to house them at this time, so having them is, I mean, we've got to, we've got to work that into the budget moving forward. But I don't know that this is the appropriate funding mechanism for that at this time.
Let's ask the fire chief. All right, chief, those six additional firefighters, what would that cost us annually right now? Roughly a million dollars, something like that?
Yeah, starting pay, because our, because it's, it's graduated up as they, as they put in more time. The initial costs with pay and benefits approximately $800,000. But then there's additional costs as far as PPE, looking at about $20,000 per employee. Then the training hours, overtime, so.
And the question, the question was, do we have a place to house them?
We do, but it's not optimal.
Do you have a plan?
We do have a plan. And this is, this has been discussed, we've been discussing this for the better part of the last two years, is, is, it's far from optimal, but can we do it? Yes. Is it optimal to do it? No. My top priority is a third operational fire station, a temporary fire station, because then that allows all of the other dominoes to fall. But we could make, I mean, we're the fire department. We can make anything happen.
Don't we have that coming this year?
It should be coming this year. There is, there is a high likelihood that we will need additional funds beyond the $1 million that's been allocated for that project.
Okay, so there's, there's where I would look like to see this go, because without a place to put people, we don't have, don't.
If, if I could add a, a little bit of context as, as well for consideration is, we have an academy that's just about to start with four personnel. We started that process for getting those people to start in November. And they won't be ready to hit the floor until the end of May, June. So if you were to authorize some staffing today, we would not have those people ready to deploy. And that's, and that would be if HR was able to prioritize them, which they're incredibly, incredibly busy. They wouldn't be able to be deployed until September, most likely. So just for consideration, so you know the timing anyways.
Fair enough.
It is quite a bit, quite a bit of timeout.
From the time it's just allocated? From the time the funds are allocated, or from the time we, because that, there's a, I'm, I'm getting it.
Yeah, so I cannot, I can't start a process for hiring. I mean, we, we could have a list, but I can't start a process for hiring and offer a job until there's actually a position that's created. So that's just, that's unfortunately just the way, the way it works.
What comes first, the chicken or the egg? So, I mean, do we have to allocate the funds in order to create a job position in order to go out to find someone to fill that position within the next nine months? Eight, or six months? That's.
So, yeah.
That was a question, actually.
Rita, can you answer? Rita?
Sorry about that. Yeah, Rita is able to help out on this one.
Okay.
That's the problem.
Correct. Heather, you have to allocate the money before we can hire for the position, before we can create the vacancy and fill it.
The, the positions would need to be approved by council, because they're not currently in the budget. We would need to allocate funds and then, and then fire would need to do their training, or we need to hire and then training.
Okay. So then, I want to make sure that we've, first priority for me is funding the shortfall in the roads. Second is the software. And then third would be... No, third would actually be the, the positions. And anything left over would go towards the temporary station to help with any offsets of that.
Can you, what was number three again? I'm sorry.
So number three would be the, the positions, the fire positions, establishing funds for those positions. And then number four would be, and if there's anything left over at that point, would go towards offsetting any unforeseen costs, which are always going to be seen on temporary station. Yeah. Does that make sense? Thank you.
So I, I would like to add the sheriffs in there too, because the sheriffs, we, we, we have to make sure that we have security too, and that's something you're very concerned about. We've looked into, today we actually had a meeting on the Flock software. And they came in and they talked about the cameras, putting new cameras up. They're going to run a report on how many it'd be. Go ahead. Okay. Oh, sorry, I'm sorry, I apologize. But yeah, the, the cameras actually are, are through the sheriff's department. So we would fund the sheriff's department, and they would actually run the system for us. So by adding this would give us more security in here, let us put them around town center a little bit, and actually have Trolley Square and other areas of the town. And we'd make sure, if you could take some time and maybe go over to El Cajon and look at their system, you'd be surprised how well it's working for stolen cars. And actually, the sheriff was talking about a little bit today, they've caught people from up in, up in, what was it, Riverside County that came down here? And you were talking about they were doing that?
Like, for example, burglary crews that were stealing catalytic converters. And we were able to, because of the readings from those cameras, we were able to kind of pinpoint certain cars that were probably associated with that. And we were able to find them and target them, and then sure enough, they were involved in those activities.
So it's just a way of helping make it more secure in the city, and it's something that we should be looking at, because I think you said six out of, how many cities have done it so far?
I don't have the exact number, but there's several cities. I know that our north coastal communities have them, Del Mar, Solana Beach, and...
You said San Marcos and Vista are looking at it.
San Marcos and Poway are currently in the process of obtaining them. And there's other cities, La Mesa, El Cajon, I believe National City and Chula Vista have them.
So it's just something, the, the expense is going to be, we should be able to absorb it, but it's, it's something that I would like to look into. You know, I'm not trying to down the firefighter's or anything like that.
No, I agree. Something we should look into, for sure. I'd like, I'd actually love a report on that and, and bring that up at a future council meet, so we can discuss it and maybe work on that for the next, within the next budget. I, I've been talking about cameras for...
Yeah, I know, I know. If, that's why, I know you're sympathetic.
Trails, the roads, whatever.
Yeah, exactly.
One thing, if you can, go to El Cajon though, instead of a, a meeting up in El Cajon, go see how they actually work.
Do I have to?
I seldom try to go over there.
Well, I know, it's a tough area. It's, it's, it's in the police station, so it's safe sometimes.
Good, thanks, Ron. Laura?
Okay, so this is, I mean, what was said at the top of the presentation is, these are funds that we're discussing how should be used for, like, one-time use. So when we talk about staffing, that's not one-time use. And that's a, that's a cost that doesn't go away. And just looking at this year, yeah, it's, it's 31% over, it's at 31% in our, I mean, so we have this extra money. But last year it was 24%. I mean, this is the best year we've ever had. So, and best year in 20 years. So it's not sustainable to fund positions with looking at the 20-year, you know, lens here. So that's why I did ask to have the council priorities. This is from the February 22nd, 2023 agenda item. Okay, so council, Vice Mayor Trotter mentioned item one and two, or actually one and three of 10. So the first one is focus on improvements for fire station facilities and services. And we did allocate a million dollars, which the chief mentioned were, were short, you know, based on the RFP that came back, I'm sure. And then we also have looked at SLMSA and getting additional funds through that, and additional positions as well through that. So those are some, besides the funds that we put from our reserves, you know, our overages on our reserves towards those, that, one priority, or the first listed of the 10, we're, we're working towards that. Number two was consider annexation of West Hills Parkway and surrounding parcels. And, you know, in the scheme of things, that's a nice to have, but not a need to have. And I, I think, based on the nods, we probably agree. Number three, continue to focus on expanded rove and paving and other infrastructure improvements. So it's not just roads and pavings, it's also the stormwater and all that other stuff, and, and, and we know that. Number four, expand and diversify economic development opportunities through the arts and entertainment district and cannabis implementation. So we're actively working on those. Number five, implement an automated permitting system and other managed information system enhancements such as website redesign and a future financial software upgrade, which that is looming. And we've seen how long software implementations take. We need $900,000. I bet we'll need more. I just, I just bet we'll need more. So, well, that's just how it goes, right? So we would have to start pretty dang soon. Number six, continue to focus on positive resolutions to homelessness and risk reduction, especially in the San Diego River Corridor. That ties to number one in, in a lot of ways, or at least public safety overall. We've allocated significant dollars to the river bottom and, and, you know, creating barriers and paths for our firefighters to travel. And that's a one-time use that we still continue to need to do. Number eight, to Councilmember McNels' point, enhance and implement safety and maintenance improvement on city's trails. Well, that's, our, our trail system, we want to feel safe on our trails. We, we haven't allocated money towards that, though. I mean, there's a lot of work to be done there. Number nine, it's always a good idea to, it's not, it's not sexy, but Calpers and the unfunded liability, whenever possible, you should always put money towards that. And then finally, number 10, which we're on track and it looks like it's coming pretty soon, is the development impacts fee study. So I, I definitely think we need, I'm, I'm all for paving roads. The community center was a top 10 priority in here, but when we did this meeting, that was funded, to the best of our knowledge. And we were moving forward with it. So that's why it dropped off. Well, it seems like it's back on the table because we need more money. And I don't want to delay building this community center that we've been talking about since 2018, I think, maybe even 2016, because we might need an, an extra 1.5 million dollars. It, it was a priority that dropped off because we thought it was handled. And we, we need that money, we have to get that going. We have to, I mean, we have our, our team, we're at almost 100% design, we should be ready to go. Yeah, yeah, we should be ready to go on that. And if we need some more money to get that across the finish line, we need to do that. So these are all priorities, but some rise to the top of 900,000 needs to happen, community center needs to happen, looks like we need to allocate more money for the temporary station. I, I personally can't justify staffing when we don't have, this is supposed to be one-time use, because we can't guarantee it every year. So I, I agree with most things, except that one part. And add the community center.
I, I heard you agree with me? That's all I heard, that's all I heard.
Typical man.
All right. So I think these are all good ideas. If we had about, oh, let's say 20 million in, over. But we don't have that kind of money, obviously. So as people listen to this and they hear us talking about all these different things, I would hope they think, man, I don't envy those folks up there, because we like to do them all. I agree with Laura, and one of the questions I was going to say is, so, do we have the money to fund six additional fire staff members from now and in the near future? Or will we have to take 6 million dol, this entire, nearly 6 million dollars and budget for the next six years, hoping that we get more money? And the reason why I say that is because when it runs out, you don't have the staffing. It's very much like some of the programs that we had here before, where we hired firefighters. And when the money ran out, because the grant was over, we had to let people go or hope that there was enough attrition that we were back to where the staffing was before. And, and I agree with Laura, this is not full-time funding. This is one-time funding, and that's what we need to do. I don't, I, I give you the floor in just a moment, Rob, but if you, if you have figured out a formula to do this funding over the next, who knows how many years, I'm all ears, because I, I'd love to see us have more firefighters, because I know what the difference is between not having enough staffing in your emergency services, and the consequences can be for that. I just, I, I want somebody to enlighten me on how that can be done.
So my point with this is, and I, and I recall when we had the one-time funds and we lost them and we ended, I, I recall when we had to do that, that was very difficult to do. However, we're adding stations, or we, we need to have people in those stations. We have, I mean, we're adding stations, we have no choice, but we, so we, we have to find this one way or another. There's no way around that. We have to find this one way or another. This is just the kickstart.
But isn't, isn't the station over here, not here? By Santee Lakes? Sorry. Station five? Isn't that one already, like, beyond capacity? Don't they have, already have too many? Like, wasn't that part of the first plan, is to build this temporary station by the operation yard and then actually relieve that station because it's beyond capacity right now?
To an extent.
Yeah, that is, that's included in the plan. As, we obviously only have two stations. The placement of our apparatus is not optimal. And so that is the, the most immediate solution, is moving a unit from that location to the temporary station.
And we still need to add over there, do we not?
We still need firefighters. But I, I get it, I get it. And I'm not looking, you know, from, from fire side, we're not looking to rob Peter to pay Paul here. I'm not looking to completely undermine all the other needs in the city, because that's what the cost would be as well. So I'm, I'm, I would like to acknowledge that, that we have a lot of hardworking people in this city, and a lot of hardworking... that we have a lot of hard-working people in this city, and a lot of hard-working departments, and they have needs too. So, I understand, I get it, we get it.
I think where, where we really benefit is, is over time. For instance, finish the fire station, okay? Move the personnel that need to be moved. And in the meantime, though, we're going to have some other businesses coming online, because we're talking about at least eighteen months before we see any relief there. And in eighteen months, we'll have other businesses come online, we'll be able to have another budget, a full budget cycle coming forward. And at that point, we can start working on how we're going to have that continuing, continuing revenue service in order to fund those. Because I, I think we're going to be able to get there, I just don't think we're going to get there using one-time funds. I get that, and, and I really do appreciate that thought, I really, really do. And I, I, there's no one here that knows, you know, better than you probably do, my support for the firefighters. And, but I, we have a really tough decision here, and my decision.
Mayor, I, at least, my, my comment, it's not about the firefighters, it's about our city, it's about our constituents. It's providing the best service to our constituents that, that we should be providing to them. This is an area that we have been lacking on, is giving them the proper service that they, you know, require. The chief has talked so many times about response times. If we can't get to somebody in four minutes, and a lot of you guys heard, you know, a month ago, when I had the gentleman here with the, with the cardiac arrest here, we got to him. I was on that apparatus that day, we got to him and we saved his life. He walked back in this here because of our Sheriff's Department deputies and because of those firefighters. They got him back to the hospital, got surgery, and he walked back in this, this place a month ago. And that, I, you know, that's what we, all, owe our citizens. We owe our citizens that opportunity every single time. And there's some, like I mentioned, two weeks ago, I think it was, or whenever, Chief said, we have some real, real tough decisions to make here. And, and it all comes down to, again, priorities and, and all these things. And this is, it's not easy. And I'm, I'm not, I'm usually not the one advocating for, you know, more staff either. But I'm understanding where we are today within the, with the budget we have, the monies we have, and the opportunity that we have to, like Rob said, kickstart this and go forward with what we really need to, to do, to provide for the city.
Okay, I, I get that. Everything we do is about the constituents. The people that live in this community that we have to walk by every day and say hello to. And we don't want to have to hang our head. My question is, though, if we do this now, can we come up with a list of what community benefits we're also going to have to give up? No more concert series. Do we give up the, you know, our Santee TV, which is getting great reviews for being transparency to the people that live in our city? Or do we give up, you know, the senior programs? I, I don't know. And I'm not trying to say this to be facetious or flippant. I'm just saying that in order to do that, you have to give up programs. How many people do we have to lay off in order to hire six, hire six more people? I don't know. These are just things that we need to consider. And, and quite frankly, I'm not willing to consider letting people go. I think we're going to get to where we want to be, we're just not going to get there, well, in the next six to eight months. And keep in mind also that when you hire those trainees, they're a part of the equation on how much it costs. It's not just their, you know, wages once they become full-fledged firefighters. And there's, there is a cost to that, and it's not, you know, insignificant cost. Yeah, exactly. And, but, one-time, these are one-time funds, absolutely one-time funds. But I do appreciate what you're saying. I get that, a hundred percent. So.
I, I would like to also say, like, it does sound, though, we do have a shortfall in funding the temporary station. Like, shouldn't, should that be one of the topics that we discuss with this fund?
That was one, that was my number two priority, yeah.
I thought, okay. It was number two, or?
That was number.
Oh, well, actually, I guess it was four, but if you're, if you're getting rid of three, then,
Okay.
Then it becomes number three.
Okay. So, yeah, for me, the software, community center, and the temporary fire station, and roads. Did I miss anything? And I want to do something with the trails, I mean, I really do.
You know, for me, on this, I, I would switch that two and three. And the reason why I would say that is because we have been working so hard on this other permitting software, and I think that a lot of staff is really just kind of getting used to it.
Without a doubt. It was a joke about making, about doing that, implementing that this year. That was a joke. That was just to scare the heck out of the staff.
Some of these things are just.
Bijeebies out of me.
Just allocations.
Yeah, just allocating it.
When they're implemented, how they're implemented, you know, all that, that's a staff's job.
Okay. Well, then number three wouldn't be a bad thing, then.
Yeah.
But I think that by getting that station online, getting the staffing moved, first of all, that'll be the first fire facility we've had south of Mission Gorge Road. It could, especially since that's going to probably be in the ambulance, maybe a, a truck of some kind, probably would have a greater response time south of Mission Gorge Road, and, and then we go for there. So for me, that is a priority. And, yeah, we can throw in some, you know, software money, I guess, but it's not high on my list. Not, not in this budget.
And it's, and it is a one-time cost that we're going to have to have, and it's a million dollars.
But if we put part of it towards that, then we, you know, next year we can fund it and fund it and fund it until we get there, the three-year rule.
So, I'm just going to recap. So the three things I suggested, two point nine million, nine hundred thousand dollars, and a million dollars, still leaves a million, one point one million dollars still. Just on, I'm just using my thing, so, that's a decision. Are we, are we gonna use these five-point million dollars? Are we going to save some of it? I mean, what are we, I mean?
Remember, last year, we put a million.
This is a lot of money, you guys. It adds up, this is not just a million dollars, I mean, it happens to, like we've had in the past where, you know, we only had one or two things able to do this. This is a chunk that we have a lot, opportunity here to do a lot of things.
I'm thinking, put it more into roads.
Oh, I, like I said, funding, fully funding our goal.
For two years at that point, right, Carl?
Based on the recommendation you gave, we would be funded for this fiscal year coming up and the next one.
What percentage would that take us to?
Well, based on the Paying Manager Report, it's going to get us closer to that seventy PCI. That was the goal, and that's what was established in the report. We'll rerun the report in the next year or two, then we'll have a feeling where we actually fall. Because it's still just a plan, it's not, that's exactly what's going to happen.
So, we, how many? We had, it was five, five-year plan, and we've completed year two already. Is that correct?
Yeah, twenty-two, twenty, twenty, yeah, so we did it in twenty-two, so twenty-three, twenty-four.
So we are funding year three and year four, potentially.
Then there'll be one more year, but I think we might be recommending in another year to come back with another plan to, to get a better benchmark where we're at.
Heck of a kickstart we gave you guys to.
It's the biggest kickstart we've ever had.
I think Heather's got some words.
Would you require another PCI test or survey?
That's what we'd recommend, and we would build that into the program and, and reevaluate all the streets, and that'll help give us another indicator of how this money and extra infusion actually is getting us towards those goals.
Is that before or after Pottery Dam Ridge Desert Streets?
We'll, we'll wait till they're complete.
Definitely be after.
Laura, you want to clear anything up?
Well, when you were talking about software, what were, what software were you saying?
The finance software.
Yeah, the, the finance software, the ERP.
You're saying yes to that?
I'm saying a hundred percent, we need to fund it, you know, when it's implemented or?
There was some joke going around about software, and I'm like.
The joke was that start tomorrow on it.
Oh.
You know, and, no.
Have it, have it implemented this year.
An allocation of funds.
Okay, okay.
He got me on it, okay? I fully admit that.
Okay, all right.
Is that it?
I think that's it.
Counsel?
Are there any questions?
Have you been able to?
Counsel, can I, yeah.
Marlene has a few.
Mr. Mayor, if I could ask for just some clarification, we've had a number of thoughts brought up. On a staff level, what I'm hearing is, this year and next year for roads, that's two point, two point nine, right? So we're going to take care of that. And then I'm hearing to take care of the financial software. So that's, everybody seems to agree on that. So that puts us at three, basically three point eight, right? Because we already have a hundred thousand, that's nine hundred thousand plus two point nine, that's three point eight. That leaves you with roughly two point one million dollars left that you have some disagreements on how to expend those dollars. If we could cut, at least cut down to two point, you know, to the two point one, and you're in agreement on the balance, that gives us something to go after. And then we've heard a number of different things, putting money into the temp station. I will tell you that we had a good plan for our temporary fire station. We ran into some financial issues when we bid the project. We're going to be rejecting those bids and modifying our process for moving forward. I'm going to kind of put Carl or Steve on the, on the, the button here a little bit, and see if there's a way, if counsel wanted to put money into a temporary fire station, because I'm also hearing that brought up a lot, if they put five hundred thousand dollars, do you think that's going to get us there? Do we need eight hundred? Understand we're not holding you to it, you know, your, your hands are not tied here, but in a general world, what would we be looking at to get through the bidding cycle and get the temp station going?
It'll certainly help. I, I can't say definitively it'll get us there.
We understand that.
We still need to look at some modifications to the potential plan that we brought forward, maybe reducing some of the infrastructure and things we planned on doing. And that's something we have not really gotten to the meat and bones of that conversation yet.
Okay. So Carl, I get you're the engineer who's sliding around the number. I get that, okay. So the other alternatives that are on the table, you had additional contribution to calpers was another suggestion. There was a suggestion for the community center. There was a suggestion for the temp station. Community center looks like one point five, you could give some of that, all of it, none of it. Calpers, you could give us any number. I didn't hear anybody jump on that one, so it's not super sexy for you.
For me, it's community center and temporary fire station are the remaining options.
So if you tell us that, we'll try to take the balance of the money and make it work the best that we can for those two projects, if that's what counsel wants.
A million dollars for the community center and the remainder of the fire station.
We don't know what the, we don't know what the real numbers are, so we can't make a decision.
But we can dedicate it to that, and, and if it's less, then it gets reallocated.
We're setting at a hundred percent design on the community center, so we have to move.
Right. So what I was suggesting is that you take another million dollars and dedicate it to the temporary fire station. And that can be held, and if we need less, we need less. The rest of it dedicated to the community center, so we can move forward on that.
I think, do we need to get to the community center? Do we need one and a half to get there? That's the number that I saw on the staff report. So.
Yeah, the one, the one point five would get us there. It will also potentially get us closer to, to starting sooner.
Okay, so, counsel, what I, what I would ask at this point to help resolve the question, is will you just take the balance of what you have and work on those two projects? Get the temp fire station moving forward, and if you want to do the community center. Or assign some money to either of those, or give us another alternative, is fine.
I, I'd say dedicate the money to the community center, get it started, and when we have leftover, go to the fire station.
I agree with that.
Is that a motion, or?
The.
Well, you're going to do this.
Can I interject on that one? We're going to know the temp station number first, and we maybe fund that first, and then whatever's left over.
That, that's fine. I mean, we still give that direction, still lawful, still falls within, you know, purview. Do you have any?
I'm fine with it. I mean, I, I still want to look at the software, but other than that, I mean.
Rob, do you have any?
I'm just still frustrated that the number of the, for the community center keeps going up every time I say, are you sure this time? And,
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm sure, and then it keeps going up again and again and again. So it's, it's getting a little aggravating. I mean, we started off, this thing was nine million dollars. I mean, that's a ridiculous number now in, in retrospect, because it didn't include the things that it was supposed to, and it was, you know, we're looking at different phases, it's, this is getting out of control.
We're, we're, we're going to be at twenty-four million dollars here soon. I mean, we're, we're three million dollars short right now, is what we're looking at.
Yeah.
It's, we're nowhere close. We, we can't fund the difference. Even with a million dollars, it's not going to get there. There has to be, something else has to change. This is, this is just a start again to try to figure out how to fill a gap that, it's, it's a hole.
Until the next.
Much bigger hole than, than what we have.
The, the thing is, though, that if we don't get started now, it's just going to continue to grow.
Oh, I, I get that on the, on the overall cost, but the problem is, we're not ready to start. Carl, I mean, please help me, to tell me, if we gave you guys a million and a half dollars today, you can't start this for another eighteen months, right? Is that my understanding?
The, the vast majority of the funding is coming from developer impact fees.
Sure, I understand.
Those, those are, some of that money is not currently in the bank.
Let's forget that we, that we need any, let's say we can fund the whole entire thing today, five million, ten, I don't care what it costs today. When could you actually start this thing, if we could?
Physically, you know, with our current workload and staffing, not till next spring at the earliest, as recommended in.
We're talking eighteen more months before we can even start the project.
But we still need the money, but we still need the money. And, and we, you know, the whole bid process, and you know this, I mean, it's, it's going to take a while, and you put the money aside when you have it now, when we're, when we have this thirty-one percent, because like I said, last year, twenty-four. You can't, this is what we're talking about, the surplus funds and, and the top ten priorities. The reason, the only reason the community center isn't on there is because we thought it was fully funded.
Yeah.
A hundred percent. I mean, this has been since twenty sixteen.
We can't walk away from it.
Yes.
I think we have to do it.
I think we, I think.
We're way too far.
In twenty sixteen, it was a, it was a priority of the council in twenty sixteen. We ran into COVID twenty twenty, we lost a couple of years there. It became a real priority to this council three years ago, again, that we took, and we put real money into that thing. We, we put money into the, the design, the, the funding, the, we did everything that we thought we were doing to try to get this to the finish line. But what I'm hearing and what I'm seeing is the finish line's not even in our sight.
Well, it's in our, it's in our sight, we'll get there.
Past Oceanside right now.
No, I mean, I understand, it's frustrating, I totally do. And that's why the six hundred thousand dollars for the, you know, the app, the turf, or synthetic turf is like, ah, because we could have used that money for this, or, or something that we just listed. And that's why we, you know, there has to be a better process with the reserve funds too, just a process. We don't have that. So, I mean, we've come full circle on it, but I've, I've shared my top four.
I'm lost, where's our priorities now?
If you don't know what your priorities are, sir, we've got other issues.
Okay. Boy, I tell you. So, so, we talked about the, the first one, what, remind me, what was the first one?
The roads.
The roads, okay.
Two point nine million.
Okay, two point nine million for roads. And then we talked about the software.
Nine hundred thousand for the ERP software.
Right. Okay, so then that's going to leave us, what I'm seeing as three and four, so, so, let's see, the temporary fire station, and then the remainder for, okay. I'm going to make a, I'm going to make, I'm going to create a motion here, and I'm going to say that we give direction to staff that we apply two point nine million to the roads, nine million, nine hundred thousand dollars of software, one point five million to the temporary fire sta, I'm, one point five million to the temporary fire station, and the remainder to the, pardon me?
One point five to the community center and the rest to the temporary fire station.
That, that's right. Okay, clarify that. One point five million to the community center and the remainder to the temporary fire station.
I'll, I'll second it.
Okay.
And mayor, that includes staff's recommendation on all the other items.
Correct.
Correct.
Yes, because we don't have a reserve fund policy.
All right, please, let's, please, prepare to vote, and please vote.
Motion carries with four eyes.
Thank you. Thank you, everybody, for all the input. And that takes us to item number ten, which is a resolution supporting affordable housing and commitment to a collaboration between the City of Santee and the County of San Diego. and commitment to a collaboration between the city of Santee and the county of San Diego. Marlene.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and members of the council. Let's go ahead and advance the slide, please. So just as background, the council is very well aware that the county of San Diego is a very large landowner within the city of Santee, our city limits. They feel that they have total authority over what types of development they want to do on those particular parcels, and have done that with various types of facilities such as Los Colinas, the new Cessers office, and the new animal shelter that they are currently planning north of Chub, pardon me, south of Chub and north of River View Parkway. However, the city and the county have been working to try to coordinate land use designations throughout the city on county-owned property. And particularly tonight, we would like to talk about the property that is located on Magnolia Avenue. The county is requesting a, a resolution of support from the city of Santee for their land use plan that they'd like to move forward on those properties. Next slide. So the slide that's in front of you is the county-owned property along Magnolia Avenue. It's the site that is southwest of River View Parkway and Magnolia. Council knows it well. For the community, it is bounded by a River View Parkway, north of which will be the new animal shelter. On the west side is Los Colinas, south is the residential area along Park Avenue and the Methodist Church. And to the east, there are residential uses. The plan that you see in front of you includes the historic barn. It says Polo, but I know our historians here in town would say it's not Polo, it's just the barn. So it does include that, and this plan does not eliminate that. In fact, it allows for an opportunity to make better use of that site. The site is the former home of the Edgemore Dairy, and the barn is there now and will continue to be there. The city has previously considered this parcel, the entire parcel, as part of an office and industrial, institutional use as part of the River View Office Park Plan and the Town Center specific plan. Recently, the city designated 17 acres of the site for affordable multifamily housing development, with the northernmost portion, the green section that you see, set aside for park and open space surrounding the, the barn that would remain. City representatives, elected and staff, have been working with the county behind the scenes to gain support for the county utilizing the property in the method that works the best with our current general plan and our upcoming Town Center specific plan update. The county has requested a support from the city for the plan that's in front of you so that they could take this forward to the Board of Supervisors in the immediate future. County staff intend to present this so that it does coordinate with the city's plan and allows them to, hopefully in the near future, sell off some of the affordable housing sites to be able to assist the city and the county in meeting the RENA goals that are applicable to both agencies. In regard to the other county use, there's no guarantee of what will go there. However, that is the general area, as council is aware, that the county had proposed putting a homeless shelter in years past. That currently is not on the plan for the county of San Diego. They also have recently made an adoption that tiny homes will not be allowed to be built within District 2, our current supervisory district, unless there's negotiations with the community and with our supervisor. So this other county use could be anything that is in the county's, what we call our CIP plan, they call it by another name, but there is nothing for a sheriff station upgrade or remodel, sorry, guys, in the future plan. There's nothing for any other types of uses that we could see at this time, except for potentially a future library, three or four years out. Could that change? Absolutely. However, the county does desire to want to bring the balance of this property into coordination with the city's, again, current general plan and our updated Town Center specific plan. As you'll note, moving forward, this looks familiar to our city council and to many of you in the audience. So from that perspective, I would encourage council and staff is actually, if we want to go to the next slide, staff is going to actually recommend that council approve the resolution, working with the county, allow staff to continue to work with the county on that other county use parcel, because if we don't adopt this, the county still has the ability to move forward with anything they want on those properties. If they are going to move forward with this type of a land use plan, it limits what they're going to do with their own property and makes it more coordinated with ours. Then we only have to worry about one smaller piece rather than the whole thing. So in that regard, I would recommend to the city council that we go ahead and approve the resolution, and you authorize me to send a copy of that over to the county to be presented to the Board of Supervisors. Happy to answer any questions that anyone may have.
We have two speaker slips.
The first speaker is Gary Strawn.
Is AJ one of the speakers?
He's the next speaker, sir.
Yeah, well, have AJ come up first.
Good evening, Mayor, council members, staff. Good evening, Mayor, council members, staff. I'm deeply grateful for the opportunity to talk to this proposal because I believe it is missing a strong enough essential protection of a very unique Santee community asset. As proposed, seems to me it leaves a Santee Historical Society barn at risk of being crowded out or even being torn down instead of becoming a vital community landmark, vibrant gathering place, and park-like gateway to the arts and entertainment plan. I believe currently the county lease leaves the society at risk of forced vacation, vacating the property in 60 days, according to the current lease. It also prevents the improvements to maintain a quality park area and the building. The upper floors could readily become a much-needed community gathering center and entertainment place, while the lower floor would be a quali, a much more quality historical preservation attraction. These are all because Santee does not have the management control of that area. I believe that if the council were to delay the approval of this until a suitable management agreement or property transfer over the 4.75 acres would give Santee City in perpetuity the, the ability to assure that it meets and aligns with our city citizenry's goals and plans. I have a special connection with this. Our family, we've, we've been residents here for 46 years, but our family connection goes back to 1917, where Linda's grandfather drove the Standard Oil cart, horse-drawn cart. In fact, it was at the adjacent building that her grandfather saved the county bull and cows by putting them up on bales of hay during the flood, and he lived off of cow milk for three days. My grandkids are sixth-generation Sante, and I really like the idea that in 2124, they look back, their grandchildren look back, and at this meeting, we were able to assure that that area was preserved for their benefit. Thank you.
Thanks, AJ. No further speakers, other than Gary Strawn.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Vice Mayor, Councilman, friends. I'm going to, Gary Strawn, I'm a resident, and I'm also representing the Santee Historical Society here tonight. And I want to trump AJ. My great-grandfather moved here in 1913, so. Pending details, we're cautiously optimistic with this plan. We understand the need for subsidized housing, and we look forward to the city gaining control of the park area. With a more stable agreement, we would be in a position to work with you, obtaining private and state funds to maintain the barn and, and the property around it. I'm confident you will do the right thing. I'm not so confident about the county. And that's it. Thank you.
All right. One thing that I want to say before we go into discussion is that a lot of people ask the question about affordable homes, and many people are under the impression that that is a, what they call high-density affordable, or what do they call that? High-density, low-income housing. And that's not what affordable housing is. If you look around Santee, we have affordable housing projects here that you would never even know. Many people that live in those places, it's the closest they could ever come to living in, maybe at, or at a country club, because they are done that well and they have those many amenities. In the past, we were able to control a lot of what happened on the property at affordable housing. For instance, we could cause the management of those properties to do things like financial literacy for the people that are living there, tutoring for the children that are there, and a variety of different amenities could be placed there. And they've always been very good. And not only that, but affordable housing is, can be only temporary because it's based on income. So let's say you have a single parent, and they're living there with their two children, they end up getting remarried, and then they want to bring in that spouse, and now the spouse is working, so they both make too much money to live there. So it's a hand-up type of living facility versus a hand-out living facility. So they're really very, very good for neighbors and neighborhoods that they go into. So having said that, I just, a lot of people are concerned about that word, affordable housing. And so I just thought I would go ahead and describe what affordable housing really is. So Ron, you have some comments?
Yeah. I brought this idea up in 2020 to Joel Anderson's office. We've been working on this for four years now, and we're finally making progress. My concern has always been, first of all, I want to see the barn where there's a park there. But I knew that there's going to have to be a give and take if we do this. So when I brought this plan up originally, and I've given it to, I'll say, two and a half of the three supervisors right now, because one of them's no longer with us. But, so they, they're, they've been aware of this for, since literally 2020. And when we did this, the idea was that we, we give up some affordable housing and we, because we have to, and we're required to, and we need to come up with homes to do it, but we, we get a park out of it. And that's what this deal does. It gives us a park, not as big as I wanted, but it gives us some ability to do. I'm a little concerned about the other, other item, but it's hidden in the back next to the jail, so whatever they put in there, they're going to have to, they're, they've got a nice view of the jail right there to kind of remind them what, what's going on. So I, I will make a motion to approve this, but I think it's to our benefit to do it. I'm very concerned about what could go in there otherwise. And we heard about the tiny homes, which you kind of saw me flip out over when the time came with it. I'm concerned it could be worse than this, and the county, unless you have something in writing with them, they have no problem changing their mind, doing what they want. So we're definitely in approval of this, and I think it's going to be a good addition.
So I am, you know, this is progress in the right direction with the county? And the fact that there is some park space here dedicated where the barn is, is, is what people in Santee want? I just wonder, is there any, I mean, the county, I guess, owns the barn too, or how does that work? So the county owns the barn, and they probably couldn't care less about the barn, and Santee wants and loves the barn. Is there any kind of process to claim, you know, make it be a, a true historical building that they can't tear down, or?
There's no such, there's no such thing, by the way.
Okay, I don't know. So that's what I'm asking. Oh, mm, okay.
Do you have an answer for that, Marlene?
The barn is on historical register, but that doesn't mean they couldn't condemn it or something else. But, but it's as protected as it can be. And I know it looks rundown, but it's physically in pretty good shape, but just.
It's only rundown looking because they won't let you do anything.
Right, right. We can't do anything outside and, and, you know, we don't want to spend money on it if they can throw us out in two months, so.
Right. Okay.
But it, it is on the register.
Thank you.
So I think, council, just a couple of quick comments to move forward with the rest of your comments, and to answer perhaps some of the concerns from our, our great historical citizens here and our historical society. This is a step towards the city and the county negotiating on trying to look at what happens on the property on the north end, the par, the park area and the barn. That has to be a decision by this council and the county board of supervisors on what happens with that. This is just the first step in that process. It doesn't, it doesn't say we're going to take it over, it doesn't say we can't, but it gives us at least a property to talk about. Right now, their property lines don't even align with the plan that is currently on the schematic that we showed you. So this is just a way to get a step towards that, and then we can start talking about affordable housing and how that comes in and what sort of amenities that has, maybe how that ties into the barn, and maybe the county negotiates with us to be able to take over that property, should the city be financially in the position to be able to handle that, right? Because that all comes with a cost as well. But this is just the first step.
Okay. Thank you for clarifying that. And then with these other parcels for attainable housing, I think of Weston, whose development standards or building standards do they have to follow? City of Sante's? Okay, that's good. That's actually a great thing. Okay. And then, you know, of course, that big orange blob, the other county use, five acres, is concerning, but overall, we're getting closer to what I think we were, we've been working, you all have been working for, for a long time, so I'll second, I'll second the motion.
Yeah, maybe, can you go back to the map, please, for a second? Couple questions, but, so in our, in our Town Center Plan, Arts and Entertainment District, we have, we have a road going through there, right? Is that able to still happen with this park at, at the top? I see the, it's highlighted, it says, "proposed access roads." This doesn't, it's not a city street. You know, is that, are we able, Carl, can, maybe you can, are we able to put road through the, through the park there, through the middle of it? Is there any issues with the, or what we've already created with the Arts and Entertainment?
It's in line with the Arts and Entertainment District proposal that will be coming forward to you as a full proposal at a later day, yeah.
Okay. Just wanted to make sure. And then Sean, maybe you could help me understand the, like, Councilman Hall said, you know, we don't have anything in writing from the county, like, saying, you know, we're, yes, this is good, that we can do this, we can't do this. What's the legal side of, of us agreeing to this? Like, are we committed to, to something? Are we saying, yeah, hey, we?
It's just, it's, I mean, if you look at what you're saying, you're, you're saying, hey, we seem to be moving in the right direction, let's keep going. It doesn't, it, there's no commitment. I mean, all these things have to be worked out over time. Nothing is binding with, with this. It's just, you know, it's an expression of, hey, this seems to be aligning with what we're doing, and we like that. So, you know, that, that's your expression of support. It's, it's, but it's clearly non-binding. I mean, you're, you're, you're just moving together collaboratively, which is what the point of this exercise would be.
Has this come before the Board of Supervisors yet? They're probably waiting on what we're going to do, yeah.
They're waiting for this, sir, yes.
They'll, they'll, they'll accept it.
Oh, I, I don't have any doubt they'll accept it, because they're getting all the benefit out of it. They're, they're trying to screw us and, and say, take it, so I don't, no doubt they're going to accept it.
Here's one advantage, though, is the county's not going to build affordable housing. What they're going to do is they're going to sell it to a, somebody, and then once it's sold, it puts it in a whole different category. That means that it has to comply with everything that we have in our zoning for, for the city of Santee. So the county cannot have a precedence, opinion, or action over the property once it's sold.
We, we have also talked to two, again, two and a half developers that have come forward and been interested in already picking at the property. The other one was scheduled to come in and talk to me, but they backed out at the last minute.
So, so these, these parcel lines, these are proposed new parcels, new APNs. Is that fair? Okay, so you've got four, four new parcels here. This open space, Park One, that's something to be negotiated in the future with the city. Who, how, what that, who's going to run it, what it looks like, county park, city park, whatever. Is that fair? Okay. Okay. I'm just having a real heartache with the county actually doing what they say they're going to do. Mr. Chavez, let me ask you a question. I got, we, we went into agreement with the county for a grant with, to clear our river, you know, homeless encampments, stuff like that. Has the county cleaned a single, a single encampment since we went in that agreement with them a year ago?
Yes, they have started the templeman cleanups. That is correct, sir.
Okay. That makes me feel a little better. Okay. I don't know. Rob?
I've got a lot of consternation over this and that was the reason I talked to Sean about it earlier with regards to actually what Vice Mayor Trotter just stated or just questioned, as, as what is our, was our liability on this? What are we really tying ourselves to? And the reality is, it's very little more than what's already out there, if anything more. It is just another step forward. I got to tell you guys, though, I, this ominous other county use blob, that's not, that's not an accident. That's not an accident. That's, that's, other county use is there for a reason. And that's what's got me worried about this whole darn thing, is that spot right there.
My concern is that whole parcel could be other county use.
Correct. That's the...
And that's my biggest concern. And that's been the concern from day one. That's why in 2020, I started this whole process.
Well, this will be, this will be a fight of fights if and when they decide to try and do some homeless shelter or something of that nature on the other county use site. That's, I'm telling you now.
I know, I agree.
I did actually write a note that said, track this for that particular plot.
They know, they, there's no way they don't know what they want to do with it.
We should be proactively tracking it too, so it's not a surprise like it was last time.
Right now, they can do it.
Well, apparently it wasn't a surprise to some of us last time.
It was a surprise. They knew exactly what they were doing and they sent a letter to us months before that. They knew exactly what they were doing.
It was a surprise to me, but not apparently to others. So that's why I'm saying this is not something that, they absolutely know what they want to use this for. It doesn't, saying no now, however, doesn't, doesn't help anything. Saying yes doesn't hurt anything. I'll, I'll play nice right now, but guys, part of my words, man, they know exactly what they're going to do with that piece of land.
It's hard to believe that you would have an opinion on it.
Yeah. They are, they have, they have every intention of doing something there. They just don't want to say it right now because they want us to play nice. So I track it very closely.
Yeah, that's, it should be staff tracking this closely and keeping us informed.
And actually keeping all of us informed, yes. That would be nice.
My biggest concern is, and as we go through any kind of negotiation on this, is that we do everything we can to get that park lands in our, titled in our name. And, you know, then that way we can, and if we can even make the barn part of that land agreement, even better, because you know what? Then that way we could start working together on getting that place where we want it to be. You know, you don't, you don't have to worry about where people are going to park, how they're going to make ingressy, aggress. Where's the emergency exit? All those things can be worked out and we will have a top-notch, you know, park, park-like area where people can go park, go to the museum, people can go, when there's a special event there, know they're going to park someplace and not have to wonder if they're parking, for instance, in, you know, gopher holes or not, or tripping over something.
I agree with you wholeheartedly, up and until the point where they say you can do that if we put a homeless shelter right here.
See, that's just it.
I am not going to give up on, that's, that's not, that's not something I'm going to concede on.
No, I, I get that. And I'm not even suggesting that we even think about that.
All right.
I'm just saying, we have to, you know, make sure that we, whatever we do there, we negotiate the highest best use for it. And in my opinion, that is the highest best use, is that, you know, park area.
Didn't we classify that as affordable housing anyway?
So, Councilmember, the, the open space park, the affordable housing number one and affordable housing number two are consistent with our town center specific plan update that's moving forward with the Arts and Entertainment Neighborhood. The other county use, the land is consistent, but the use is not. We would definitely prefer, if that was also listed as affordable housing, to be consistent with our housing element.
But we get...
At this point, anything they do there could be whatever they want. And so this is, again, it's just a step.
Right. But we did that, we did, didn't we come through and make the, our classification is that?
Yes, sir. The city council has already said, yes, this works with the center road. You already looked at that. Those were elements that city councils approved.
So that, that parcel that says other county use, so do we have arena allocation for that within our numbers?
So if you recall, we did an overcapacity when we established our affordable housing reasons.
We're reducing the number, though, like, by not having that as an affordable...
Which is why we will continue to work with the county to see if we can get them to affordable housing. And as well with the other units that are moving forward on other properties who would rather do non-affordable, same process.
Just because they have it as other county use doesn't change our zoning on it, though.
That's what I've been trying to say.
No, but the uses, the use could be different than what we...
Right. It, they could choose to do something different, however, it doesn't change our zoning on it. Yeah. So that, hate to say it like this, but that's another bridge to cross when we get to it, unfortunately. And we will do, well, another five years, we'll do rain again, or six years, something like that, I forget. So, okay, I have a motion and I have a second on that. Please vote. Thank you very much. Speaker slips? All right, no speaker slips on non-agenda public comment. City Council reports.
I'm going to let Laura talk about her transfer care.
Laura.
I want you to start down at the other end while you look.
I'm just going to make this comment about, so we attended the transfer care meeting yesterday, which is basically talking about the offload times from when the ambulance sits on the wall. And this is just specifically for Grossmont Hospital. But hospitals in general are seeing a definite surge in their emergency rooms. And so therefore, the push is that offload times take longer, although Grossmont Hospital, once again, is doing better than others around the county. And the county provided some data and I just, and Andy Parr was sitting next to me yesterday, so I was just like, is this true? It's just crazy to me. It was some metrics. Sorry, I wasn't ready. Basically, I think it showed, like, in January, there were 189. This was, it was a hundred-day look. So they picked, you know, I picked a day in January where it was a peak and it was 189 issues, or people admitted with something related to influenza. So it could have been the flu, it could have been COVID, it could have been anything that. But then the next highest peak for that same day or within those days was, is related to some kind of substance abuse. And I said, and so it was like 189, and then the next one was 119 of substance abuse, substance abuse issues. And then everything else was much further below on that. And I just thought, wow, we're, you know, the hospitals are overwhelmed, the emergency rooms are overwhelmed, they literally don't have the space to put people. They're just, you know, beyond capacity. And so I asked, I said, well, how long has this been going on? Is this like a, me, 10-year trend, 20-year trend? Three, three-year trend? So, you know, obviously named fentanyl, but the fact that this is a three-year trend, I don't see it going away unless something really changes, you know? Just, I just was, it was so eye-opening. It's a very valuable meeting to attend. I like, you know, hearing what they have to say. You might think it's one thing, but then to see the data, you're like, wow. It's crazy. That's it.
Maybe we should show them the formula for building emergency, emergency rooms.
Well, they've, they've changed their emergency rooms a little bit. So they've actually made it, the doctor comes out and sees the person now versus, you know, running him through the system and then later on. So it's actually a better, it's a little bit faster at Grossmont and that's the advantage of doing it. I don't know if the chief has any comments he'd like to make.
Yeah, Grossmont's, they're doing the best they can. They're the busiest hospital in the county, but they're actually, their numbers compared to county averages are better in a lot of areas. So we have a great relationship with them. They're doing the best that they can with, again, all these very complex variables that they're faced with. So there is a lot of value in the meetings, without a doubt.
There's about 20 of us that are there on a given day and maybe even a little more. And every fire department's there. And Grossmont takes it very seriously and they're, they're done it. My wife's there with me, she's on the Grossmont Healthcare Board, and the guy that runs it, the CEO, Christian Wallace, actually, is the one that put it all together for us.
Dustin, anything?
Just a quick announcement. Next Wednesday night, we'll have the District Four Town Hall right here at City Hall. Be presenting on, obviously, not only District Four, but the whole entire city. Things are going on here, so if you guys can join us here, otherwise, you can watch us on Santee TV, just like tonight. Thank you.
You can do that.
No, that's something different. That is for next week, but he won't be here, so.
All right.
Nothing, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, just to let you know, I did not attend the Cal City's Board of Directors meeting last week. I was not in a position to take seven hours flying to Fresno and then driving another 90 minutes to Yosemite, just to come back two days later. I know crazy, crazy stuff going on. That's pretty much all I have. Sandag, wasn't anything really significant that went on there. It's kind of early in the year yet, so stand by to stand by. Yeah. City manager?
Nothing tonight, sir.
City attorney?
No report.
Okay, great, thank you. That's going to take us to a closed session. And you know what I'd like to do is take, we'll just take them in the order they're at. I was thinking it was the other way around for a second. Thanks for everybody that's hung in there with us all evening. Thanks for everybody that's hung in there with us all evening.
All right, let the record reflect that we're back in open session. We had item number 11, conference with legal counsel, no action taken, nothing to report. Item number 12, HUPAC employee performance evaluation, action taken, direction given to staff to bring back for open session. And that concludes our meeting. Adjourned.